All right. It is our Joint City-County Work Session of October 17th, 2022, calling to order. Roll call, please.
Chairwoman Horstman.
I.
Vice Chairman Vasquez.
Present.
Supervisor Baggay.
Here.
Supervisor Fowler. Supervisor Ryan. Mayor Deasy.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sweet.
Here.
Councilmember Aslan.
Here.
Councilmember House.
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember Salas.
Present.
Councilmember Shimoney.
Here.
Thank you. And Chair Horstman, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Absolutely. All that can please rise to honor our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And then Vice Mayor, our mission statement, please.
The mission of the city of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you. And Councilmember McCarthy, our land acknowledgement, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to the indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as their home.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. We're down to agenda item four, public participation. Do we have anyone online?
Mayor, we do not.
All right. Then we are down to agenda item five, our flood update.
If I may, Mayor.
Yes. Please go ahead.
Mayor, for those of us on the County Board of Supervisors, we are going to resolve as the County, Kokona County Flood Control District Board of Directors. So before we go forward on this information, I'm going to ask members of the Board of Supervisors for a motion, please.
So moved.
We have a motion to resolve as the Kokona County Flood Control District Board of Directors. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. So we are now the Flood Control District Board of Directors.
Thank you, Chair Horstman. Then we are down to agenda item five, and it looks like Lucinda is kicking us off.
All right. Good evening. I'm Lucinda Andriani. I serve as the Kokona County Flood Control District Administrator, as well as Deputy County Manager. Glad to be here tonight with you, Chair and Mayor, and members of the council, as well as members of the Flood Control District. So thank you. Appreciate the opportunity this evening. And got a set of slides to go through, but I think, as everyone's aware, we had a pretty horrible summer, both within the city and outside the city. And a lot of people went through a lot of suffering. And I just want to first acknowledge that that took place, and that it's really frustrating because, obviously, we want to do as much as possible, and we always have limitations for various reasons. But I think that, in the end, there was a good response, both by the district and the city, and we're going to walk through that today, both the response. And then frankly, more importantly, now, where are we going? What is the longer-term plan? And so I want to share that with you. I think it's important to understand the gravity and magnitude of what we're facing. This is so far greater than what we saw during Schultz. And some of you were here and part of Schultz, and probably witnessed that, which, at the time, was very significant. But unfortunately, the level of flooding that we're seeing is now far greater. And an important point that I'll bring up again later is that the level of rainfall events that we had this year were all very small, five-to-10-year rainfall events. And we see that our watersheds are extremely reactive, which tells us that the watersheds have really been devastated by the fire, and then by the flooding. And what we're seeing is those watersheds are unraveling. And you're going to see evidence of that, particularly in one of these videos, you'll see the evidence. But that's really the result of the fire on very steep slopes. And so my biggest fear is what comes next year. Because this year, although we had 45 major flood events, next year, in terms of the events themselves, they could be far worse. And so, you know, we've got a long road to go here. This isn't going to get dealt with overnight, unfortunately. So with that, a little bit of history for maybe some of the members that don't have a lot of history and know that, some of the background that we went through, of course, the Schultz fire and flood back in 2010, went through at seven watersheds that were impacted at that time, pipeline now infected, two more, for a total of nine. Much of that area reburned, but importantly, so a lot of the upper watershed burned was new burn. Some of the areas had never burned before, and had not burned probably in over 100 years. And that severity of burn really is having a big impact. For Schultz, we saw 50 events over two years. This year, we saw almost 50 events in one year. We did, we were successful in mitigating five of the watersheds, and until beyond one flood event in 2018, we saw no water really leave the forest. We had no flooding impacts from the time that we constructed those measures in those five watershed, or in those five flood corridors, until this pipeline fire. So it had been very, very successful. Particularly, the real game changer is the on-forest measures, much as what we've seen with Museum as well, that continues to be the real game changer, and we'll talk more about that. We went through then the Slide Fire in 2014 that affected Oak Creek Canyon. Some of you may recall, that summer, the sales tax revenue for the city of Sedona declined by 50%, significant impact on tourism to that area. Fortunately, we never really experienced any, again, major flood events that area because it's a different type of climate and dynamics there with vegetation. It revegetated fairly quickly, and we lucked out. We never really got any big, big events. Then in 2018, we had a flood event in the northern section of the Schultz area, a thousand-year rainfall event that had impacts. I think we spent about upwards of $2 million on repairs to the mitigation in that area, but the mitigation had a significant positive impact as well. Then, of course, you're all very well aware of Museum Fire and Flooding. I think now we're probably closer to $7 million. Some of that money is being reimbursed, as you're aware, with the projects that were completed this year. In fact, I just learned that we'll be completing the Upper Tributary, the Eastern Tributary, the on-forest measures within the next week. I think the walkthrough is tomorrow, so they should be completed here shortly. So that means that all the on-forest measures will be completed. And the Forest Service has agreed, we're actually coming in under budget on that project, and they've agreed to shift that money to pipeline. So that's really good news, because we need every dime of that money to address the on-forest issues, watershed restoration issues from pipeline. And then we have one more element, of course, to do relative to the off-forest measures that's supported through the NRCS grant largely, along with District Match for Museum, which is the Parkway Sediment Basins Project. And that'll be, the plan is to have that go to construction, of course, this coming spring. And we're working through the details of that right now. So overall, you know, the district is upwards of a good $85 million that have been invested in post-walfire flooding mitigation, long-term mitigation, short-term response over the years. So that's important to understand, that that's really dominated the district's landscape for a long time, at least the last 12 years. And again, as I mentioned, the game changer has been this on-forest watershed restoration. And Alan Hayden with Natural Channel Design is here with us tonight. If you end up having any technical questions, I can ask him to come down. But even though those measures were very successful coming out of Schultz, this fire is creating so much more significant. And this says seven-to-22 times, but actually, the Schultz Creek watershed is at 26 times the increase in the volume of floodwater. So 22, the government tank watersheds at 22 times. So we're seeing just a tremendous amount of water, and that increase is overwhelming the existing mitigation that was installed in most of those corridors. So what did we experience this last year? Again, this last monsoon season, some tremendous flooding. This is in what's called the Copeland Corridor, Flood Corridor. There are actually two paths through this area. It's, if you go out Highway 89, it's off to the left at the Copeland Lane area. And what you're going to see is an example of watershed that has completely unraveled. When you start seeing the volume of boulders coming off the mountain like you're seeing here, it means that that watershed has completely unraveled. And so instead of those big, flat areas above the neighborhoods, this is a watershed that we did not restore the watershed, we did not do mitigation, it was declined by the area. But that, those natural fans that had been up there and working fairly well over the years, they certainly had a lot of flooding back in '10, '11, '12, '13, but it had moderated over time. But unfortunately, now, they've all eroded through, and now there are major channels 10 to 15, 20 feet deep that now run through those alluvial fans up on the forest and creating this kind of dramatic flooding. So. You can see the logs and the size of the boulders. These boulders are upwards of eight feet across, some larger. And this is being taken from someone's porch from their home, this video. And you can see just a tremendous amount of water. And that, when it's that color, when it's that bulked, it can carry all this debris, when it gets bulked to that degree, it actually can carry just tremendous volumes of not only rocks, but trees and stumps. And this is what remained after that flood event was, and they've had subsequent flood events, and just basically rock field for probably about half a mile to three-quarters of a mile downstream of this house as well. So this is the channel just downstream of that house. There's a roadway, and then, so you get where it fanned out, it was dropping out all those rocks, then it consolidates into a channel, and it's eroding this channel. And we have a lot of private properties with really severe headcuts now, eroded channels. This is a flood video from Wupaki Trails. It's the northernmost watershed. It was hit extremely hard this year. It's seen upwards of 11, 12 times the volume of water. And you can see that house that the water passed here on the right has been uninhabitable since June. So that family has been out of the area. This is a picture of the house. You know, we've, I think we're on our third round of various levels of barriers and sandbags trying to prevent the water from going inside the house. It had barriers. The first flood event, it got about two to three feet of water in the house, and they lost all their appliances, and they lost pretty much all the contents of the home. They really want to stay in the home, but it's been really heavily impacted. This is Seacrest School off of 180. And again, this is a flood video of flooding affecting the school and the 180 corridor. And so you can see the impacts there. And then some photographs of flooding in that area. It goes into that Stevon area, as you're well aware, and both as a result of that being somewhat of a ponding area, and the way that, to some degree, the way that people also mitigated, that's created ponding and deep water impacts there as well. So covered some of this before, but important again to point out, we had, the National Weather Service issued over 155 flash flood warnings for this area, and we had a significant number of rave emergency notifications. As you know, we stood up a flood director system. We have two flood, we have a flood director on for the city watersheds, as well as the flood director for the eastern side watersheds that's monitoring 24 hours a day, and working with the Weather Service to issue those notifications. I did an actual count of the number of homes on the east side. There's 1,729 properties that are impacted by flooding on the east side, and I know it's well over 500 to 1,000 here in the city that are impacted by the flooding. Under the modeling that was performed by J.E. Fuller, and that valuation is probably low, at $1.3 billion. That's the valuation of the property, not the damage, but the valuation of the property. And of course, as everybody's well aware, sustained many closures to both Highway 89 and Highway 180. So these are the modeling results that were produced by J.E. Fuller, and they took a two-inch rainfall event in 45 minutes. That was the same modeling that we did for Museum, and that was identified as a storm that was fairly typical of what, more typical of what we saw during Schultz, and that created impacts. And that's how we, how that was selected by kind of the engineering team, as well as J.E. Fuller producing that information. And you can see here the impacts that, in terms of this seven-to-26 times, the level of flow that we're now seeing discharge. The blue columns there in 2016, when we had completed all the mitigation in the Schultz flood corridors, J.E. Fuller ran the modeling again after everything had been done. And so, and that really considered how much recover had we seen on the mountain as well in that timeframe from 2010 to 2016. And you can still see that the increases are really significant across all the watersheds. This is something that's here again, as I mentioned earlier, my fear for next season, is this chart shows the various flood events that occurred, as well as the maximum recurrence interval. So what year, as you hear people talk about 100-year flood, or a 50-year, or 100-year rainfall event, 100-year, you know, 50-year rainfall event, et cetera. Well, that far right column is the interval, and if you look at that, you can see that the largest interval we had was five-to-a-10-year rainfall event. That's a fairly small event. And I think that's, again, why the concern exists, that we have not seen the modeled event. We haven't even seen anything really close to the modeled event. The modeled event is a 25-year event, so it's not a huge event, again, but that is a real concern. So in terms of emergency response efforts, the district set a goal and accomplished producing over a million sandbags, and that was all done in about a two-and-a-half to three-month window. We were fortunate, we did get some support out of the state with providing resources at two of the prisons, Winslow and Kingman, and that labor was tremendously helpful. There was a cost to that. We had to, of course, transport the bags, provide all the materials and everything for that. Were upwards of just the expenditures on barrier and sandbags is about $3.5 million. We did get a little over $2 million grant from the NRCS, one of their emergency grants, exigency grants, to help with that cost. Our total response cost for this last summer are just about at $8 million right now, and there are still invoices coming in. So we will probably exceed that amount. So now to move into long-term, what's the long-term plan? And as we were moving through the summer events, there were obviously a lot of questions coming in from not only the federal level, our congressional delegation. Of course, everyone wanted to know, what are we going to do to try to manage these impacts? And so the engineering team immediately began to put a plan together. And what I want to emphasize with this plan that's going to be shared is that this is an identification of what we believe is needed to address that modeled storm, that two-inch storm that you saw earlier. Obviously, all of this is dependent on federal funds. The district nor the county have the resources to fund this plan. It's just, we just don't have it. There is no way we could mobilize this level of financial support. So all of this is dependent on securing a significant amount of federal and state funding for these efforts, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later. The plan is similar to what we've done historically. It integrates kind of these three strategies. First and foremost, the on-forest watershed restoration. Then that, then water that comes out of those measures on forest goes into flood mitigation channels and other types of features through the neighborhoods. And then, with the highways, we have to figure out what, you know, then we have to get the water across the highways, hopefully in a safe manner. And we're working very closely with federal highways relative to that effort as well. So the on-forest proposed work, we're looking at four new major watershed efforts, Schultz Creek being one of those, that Schultz Creek being what flows into Highway 180 area and the 180 corridor. That, overall, all of those projects, I know this is a little bit hard to read, but if you look in your packet, those kind of blue areas are areas of alluvial fan. That's an area where the water spreads out, slows down, drops out its sediment. The real goal of these projects of on-forest work is to reduce the sediment, because if you don't reduce the sediment, the infrastructure downstream won't work. And so we have to get the level of sediment and debris down for that infrastructure to work downstream. And then expanding the existing on-forest measures to the degree that we can, expanding those to accommodate the additional flow of water, and again, significantly the amount of sediment. We estimate this work to be $35 to $40 million. It's closer to $40 million. We had a lot of damage that was experienced in August, and so now that work is much closer to $40 million now. This is the cost per corridor that's been estimated by Natural Channel Design. So you can see at the top there Schultz Creek. It's probably going to come in between $3.5 and $4 million. These are estimates based on conceptual design. So, but significant investments needed, particularly in government tank. Fortunately, in government tank corridor, that's the southernmost corridor out on the east side, that's been hit very, very hard, flows into Doni Park as well. There's a lot of alluvial fan on forest, so we can have a major positive impact there, but it will be expensive to do so. And then flood mitigation through the neighborhoods, pretty traditional. We're looking at concrete channels, box culverts, to reduce the flooding through the neighborhoods. We're also looking at detention in some of those, certainly in the government tank corridor. And then, again, expanding some of the existing, particularly Wupaki Trails. For example, it was designed to manage about 140 cubic feet per second of water. It's now getting, the modeled storm is 2,000 CFS. They've actually seen 1,000 to 1,500 CFS, many events that were 1,000 to 1,500. The plan there is to construct a channel that'll accommodate about 1,800 CFS. So that gives you an example of the challenge that we have out on the east side. And that total cost for the neighborhood flood mitigation is estimated at $50 to $55 million. Probably may come in a little bit less. I'll talk a little bit more about that. This is an example. This is a channel at the Flood Control District. This is actually one of the very few projects the Flood Control District's ever constructed beyond Schultz flood mitigation. Actually, beyond one other one, this is the only other one. This is a channel that was constructed in 2018, 19, in Mountain Dell on the Sinclair Wash. And those channels that we're proposing in the flood area would look very similar to The highway drainage improvements, there's a, you know, a number of them here, identified here. This list does not include, I'll leave it to the city to speak to Highway 180, but you can see that we're probably looking at the ballpark of $40 million. Ongoing conversation with federal highways, we're trying to access emergency relief funds. We've met the threshold, or I should say, ADOT's met the threshold to qualify for that, but if you don't have a significant amount of damage to the actual ADOT infrastructure, then they don't allocate the funding. So it's very much related to that. Historically, we did secure emergency relief funds for Schultz, and we built a very large detention facility out in the Schultz area, which performed really well this year. We actually want to expand that. We want to double that, double the size of that facility, actually, now. So, but we're working with them. It looks like some of the, some of the measures that we're proposing will qualify, and some will not qualify for ER. So summary of the costs, the grand total estimate, again, this is based on estimates at very early engineering phase, but fairly knowledgeable, given what we have done historically and contractors we've worked with and so forth. We're looking at upwards of $130 to $145 million. That's a tremendous amount. And the impact to the district would be probably in the ballpark of $40 million to make the match some of these grants. Most of the funding, the cost, for example, this assumes that we get 100% of the on-forest measures funded through the Forest Service, and we're obviously working hard advocating for that at the federal level, as well as it assumes that we get 75% of the cost through the neighborhoods funded through the NRCS Emergency Watershed Protection Funding, like what we use for Museum similarly and for Schultz. So again, without tremendous amount of federal funding, this work isn't going to happen. If we get less funding, then we have to go to a lower level of mitigation. That's what will happen. If we get half the funding, we will reduce down the mitigation measures and produce the mitigation that would, that we can produce with that level of funding. So instead of targeting a 25-year storm potentially, we're probably down at a 10-year storm or something, or even less. Schultz was five-year post-walfire was our design snow. So that's an overview of the long-term. Just wanted to share a little bit about the Schultz Creek, knowing that people within the city are very interested in what would be done with the Schultz Creek watershed. And I really encourage those that have an interest and/or live in that flood corridor, the Schultz Creek flood corridor, again, the 180 corridor area, that they participate in the flood corridor meeting on October 24th. It'll be at 6:30 here in the council chambers, and we'll obviously get into a whole lot more detail at that time. And Alan Hayden will actually present that element then and get into more detail. But very similar measures. This is actually photographs from Museum of what was constructed up in the Museum flood area, up in the watersheds. And again, this is the goal, is to take those unraveled watersheds where there are contributing sediment and eroding, and reconstructing those alluvial fans to a large extent, also doing grade control to reduce down the level of erosion as well. So this is, again, very similar type work is proposed for that watershed. Here's some other photographs of reconstructing those fans. These top set of photographs shows how they either use logs for sills and/or rock or and or rock, or moving more and more to rock, given the experience with fires. We lost some of our sills in in the pipeline and tunnel fires. And then this lower left hand corner, that's a grade control feature with very large rock that actually comes from Valley, Grand Canyon Junction. We have to truck it all the way in from Valley and and actually pay to have it blasted and so forth. And at these large sizes so that it's appropriate for the level of volume of water that we're seeing in velocity. And this is, you know, what it looks like as you get toward the end of the reconstruction of the fans, where they're hydro seeded and or seeded and mulched. And and I think that we're we're seeing some pretty good recovery out there now. Certainly, if anybody's interested in doing a tour up there, let me know. Alan's a great tour guide, and we'll get you up there to to see, you know, how it's performing. And it did perform very well this year. So in terms of the process moving forward, lots of steps still to come. This is a very complex process. With Schultz, it took us less than a year to add. Well, it took us about a year, a little less than a year, to actually get the funding. We were in a similar position as we are now, where the programs that we need to have funded at the federal level to fund emergency watershed protection, fund disaster relief programming at the at the U.S. Forest Service, for example. Those programs right now are not funded. So we need action at the congressional level. And we've been working really closely with our congressional delegation, with Congressman O'Halloran, with our two senators, Kelly and Senema. They have just been phenomenally supportive of us. And their staffs, I'm I'm in communication with them regularly. And we've put together kind of a strategy. This is a difficult year. It's an election year, as you're all well aware. And we were hoping that we might get some action before they recess for the election. That didn't happen. We thought Hurricane Ian might help necessitate that, but it did not take place. They will be back in December. Governments funded through December sixteenth. We're still hopeful that an emergency supplemental will be considered as part of that continuing resolution and that we can piggyback into that emergency supplemental. So again, they're working very hard on our behalf to try to gather the support. They're working with their colleagues, with the leadership of the Senate and the House to try to get support for what our needs are here. And of course, other disasters across the country. So obviously, first and foremost, we got to, we have to secure the money. And then once securing the money, we have to complete the engineering, go through the process. For every project, we conduct what's called no adverse impact analysis to ensure that we're not having impacts upstream or downstream with ever, with whatever is being proposed. And in those corridors where we didn't do work prior, we have to secure drainage easements and mortgage releases from all those property owners. So that's a a major undertaking. And work with those neighbors to identify what route and so forth. And you don't have a huge amount of flexibility because if you deviate too far from where the water goes now, it won't get through the no adverse impact analysis. So this is a complicated process. Got to get approvals from the Forest Service. Forest Service has been very supportive. They're working really diligently on the National Environmental Policy Act process right now. And we're hoping to have the first wave of approvals, frankly, for the east side of Highway eighty nine. Hopefully any day. I think all we're waiting for is a signature from the from the state historical preservation officer. And then for the west side, they'll have kind of phase one. And that's more of the expansion of existing measures. Probably have that sometime in the January to March timeframe. And then and then another wave of approvals on the east side, probably March, April timeframe. For Schultz Creek importantly, that will be a more complicated process in terms of securing the NEPA. They're going to, we're going to work with them. We're probably going to divide that into two areas. There's one area that we could access sooner, that they could complete the NEPA sooner. And then another where they would not be able to complete the NEPA process until fall twenty three. And the reason for that is similar to what happened with museum. We have, there's an area where there are ALPACs, and those ALPACs are necessitating a more involved NEPA process, as well as a delay in any construction. The only time you can construct in those areas is in the fall when the when the, they're not hatching their eggs and they have flood lanes and so forth. So we have restrictions that we have to abide by. So but again, all that work is still contingent on getting the federal funds as well. So. And obviously, going through all the rest of the approval process, including importantly, where is the district going to get the match for any of the funding that comes through grants? So. And our construction seasons are limited. You know, we can only, we can't construct during monsoons. We can't construct, we can construct some work during the winter, but it's fairly limited. If it gets too wet, obviously, we can't do that work during the during the winter. So with that, just one other point I wanted to bring up. And in front of you, you've got two handouts here. One relative to flood mitigation and this piece. And these are all on the Schultz Pipeline website as well. If the public wants to take a look at these, these are public documents. This piece we developed largely to use with the, for the congressional delegation to use in D.C., working with their colleagues to inform them about what are we facing here? And then and then the second piece is about forest restoration. I think one of the, one of the things that we've been saying over the years and and and, you know, having conversations about is how important the Upper Rio thinning and mechanically treating the Upper Rio watershed. And if we don't understand that now, to be honest, then we're probably never going to understand it. Because if that pipeline fire had run to the west, so I think everybody's aware it started to run to the west, and then the wind shifted and it ran to the east. If it had continued to run to the west, the level of flooding we would have experienced and Flagstaff would have been beyond catastrophic. Nobody could even, we can't even imagine, nothing like what we even saw out on the on the west, on the east side. So what that has really brought to bear for the district is just how crucial it is for us to stay focused on the forest restoration initiative. And I really want to appeal to the council to really work with us, to work with the district, to work with the Forest Service. We're, we've just met with the, and I think the chair will share this. We just had a very important meeting with the regional forester. I mean, we're pushing hard at all levels to move this work forward because it's so evident that if we don't, that Flagstaff as we know it will not exist. I mean, it will be just a horrible regional catastrophe. So we're, you know, we really want to communicate this. This is going to be shared in every venue. We're talking about this with everywhere we go now, about how important it is. The flood control district this year made a decision to about, little over double the flood control district tax. And that had nothing to do with the flood events. That had to do with increasing significantly the amount of money for forest restoration so that we can complete Bill Williams Mountain. But most importantly, to focus and prioritize the Upper Rio. So again, really hope that you'll look at this and and understand how critical that is. I know that the city has some access to some funds through the Forest Service, and we hope that we can work together and bring about this really important set of forest thinning projects in that area. So. And Jay Smith is with us. He's our forest restoration director for our initiative. And certainly, if you have any specific questions about the initiative, I'm happy to answer, or he's happy to answer those. And I'm happy to answer any questions relative to flood control and Schultz Pipeline efforts. So thank you for your attention. I know that's a lot of information and certainly happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Lucinda. We do have one public participant I'd like to get to before we go around the table. Stephen Por.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, and Coconino County Flood Control District Board, I guess it is. I'm here to talk. I'm from the mitigation on the west side. I'm a resident of West of Anaway sixteen forty. Want to clarify a few things. I've I've been here a few times. Last time I was here, there was some confusion over the long term options that the city's considering for the culvert replacement. There's an option one and an option two on the table. They don't touch the bubbler, which I'm going to address here in a minute. They leave the bubbler intact, just to clarify that. So I I appreciate the fact and all my residents that I know on West of Anaway appreciate all the work that's been done, especially up at the Schultz Y. The basins were completed very fast, I believe, because of the city was able to get funding, and they own the land, and they were able to go forward. That's fantastic. But I believe the city of Flagstaff can further reduce the flooding at Northwood Apartments, where the bubbler is, at West of Anaway, and at Coconino Estates by fast tracking two other projects, the culvert and the bubbler. The culvert that's at Schultz Creek and 180. The bubbler is the extension from that culvert that goes down to the apartments. You've narrowed it down to two options. I'm not going to get into that. I just want to point out that the two options you point out to that are on the storm waters notice of intent says that you're not going to touch that project to twenty five to twenty seven. I got an email from Ed today. And I'd like to fast track that and move that forward. I don't know why we have to wait four years. And that's why my emphasis is on the bubbler. The bubbler is a very short term, very easy fix, going to cost significantly less than it does for the whole culvert. And you have access, the city of Flagstaff, to your drainage easement behind three my neighbor's house, right down from the bubbler out to the Rio. And you can throw a pipe in there, over there, instead of letting water go through like you have now, instead of having Jersey bears laying on the side like you have now, you can lay a pipe down there. Now, according to the city of Flagstaff's financial report published on June twenty twenty one, page thirteen, approximately fifty six point four million dollars of general funds are unassigned. And they're available for spending at the council's discretion. I hope you haven't spent it all already. So you can use that money. But also, according to the twenty twenty two, twenty three budget, the general fund has a two point nine million contingency fund, and the stormwater has an additional three hundred thousand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Por. I would just like to point out the numbers you're stating about the fifty six million dollars is our contingency fund. That is the contingency fund that we use to, for example, in twenty twenty, still be able to pay our employees in in the midst of an economic recession. It's what we're able to continue to fulfill our promises and our contracts amidst record inflation in forty five years. The contingency fund is is not a slush fund. So I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
That wasn't the contingent fund I was referring to.
Thank you.
But if you spent it all.
We have not. It's a contingency fund. Thank you. Listen, thank you. Council members, any questions at this time? Councilmember Solis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Andrea, thank you so much for your presentation. I am curious to to know a little bit more details on the eighty nine, State Highway eighty nine efforts. As you may already know, I'm the vice chair of the Rural Transportation Advocacy Council, which is the collective of eleven NPOs and COGS. And supervisor service, I guess, is my alternate to the council. And we appeared to the State Transportation Board meeting a month ago and, of course, asked our our ADOT leadership and our State Transportation Board to prioritize funding and fast track flood mitigation prod eighty nine and 180. So just kind of, if you could provide additional information on that, it would be great. And I'll be in front of the State Transportation Board again.
Great. I, so what we what we learned early in the process, they came up for the August seventeenth meeting that we had with high level officials from USDA, Department of Transportation, as well as the Forest Service. And their initial response was that there were some areas that didn't sustain enough damage to qualify for emergency relief, of which one of those locations was the Highway 180 crossing. So they don't, when they look at emergency relief funding, and why emergency relief funding is the best funding is that it comes with a very small match, and it comes typically pretty quickly. And so obviously, the preference is to get emergency relief funding if we can. Otherwise, then you're you're in the the grant march with the more general grants, right? Of which there is one now that is more designed for something like this called the Protect Grants. But anyway, so we've continued to press them, both the city for 180, us for 180, as well as for eighty nine. We, and the latest is I'm sensing that there is some willingness to to reconsider some of it. So we'll see how it plays out. What we understand if for eighty nine is that the northern section of projects that we identified, kind of Copeland north, that there has been enough damage there to qualify. South of there, we've had a lot of problems kind of south of Campbell and that area, kind of the North Fork, Heppel area. Where Government Tank, that one watershed that's been so heavily impacted where the water crosses there. In fact, it closed there a number of times. There, they see there is less damage. I mean, I think it is a fact there is less damage to the existing mitigation. But at the same time, there is a need to upscale those conduits. And so we're continuing to work with them. I got an email today that they're that they're looking at it and that they're going to be setting up a time to talk through it with us. So we are looking at what might be some alternatives, and they've, of course, recommended the Protect Grants. But then I've also been informed by our mutual representatives in in Washington, D.C. You know, the state got a substantial amount of money out of IIJA. Like, I understand some upwards of a hundred and thirty three million. So are there any funds, again, out of that that potentially could be used to support these projects in some way? So we're looking at all the angles and advocating the best we can to try to get get access to those funds. These are really important corridors, not just for Flagstaff or, you know, the county. I mean, these are, these are really important economic corridors, you know, for, you know, connectivity to the tribal nations, et cetera. So so and I know there's been a lot of conversations. Vice Chair was back in D.C. two weeks ago, met with upper level undersecretary at Department of Transportation. So they're aware now. So we're trying to get that word out there that we we need this support.
Thank you, Councilmember Assley.
Thank you. Hi, Lucinda. Welcome, everybody, to City Hall. You spoke earlier about how contingent receiving federal funds is going to be on the amount of mitigation you'll be able to do. I would like to explore that a little bit more. There's a lot of different ways. You know, if you get half the funding, there's a lot of different ways to provide half the mitigation effort. You could go all in on half the areas and ignore the other half, or some other combination. And I imagine this is a decision that the five headed beast is going to make together. I'm wondering if you have any thoughts on what your recommendations will be to them, or if any of you have, are willing to share what your thinking is on how to tackle that. And we don't need to get too into it because it's fairly speculative. But I'm just looking, I'm just curious about where your minds are at right now and if there are priority areas that may or may not be in the city where you'll do more and other areas where you might decide we're just going to ignore those for now. might decide, we're just going to ignore those for now. I'm just sort of trying to weigh the possibilities.
So for the district, I think relative to the flood impacts into the city, our focus, much like it has been for museum, is on forest. Anything we can do upstream, I think we have, frankly, the history, the expertise, the ability to work very closely with the Forest Service. We've had great success with these projects that we've done historically. So I think, you know, the goal of the district is really to focus our resources and our investments there, plus given the other eight watersheds that we're tasked with having to address. The other issue is that for the district, the Schultz Creek and/or museum, obviously all the flood corridors are important. At the same time, what's the balancing act in terms of, the city is responsible for managing the floodplains within the city, you have your own design criteria that you use. It's frankly very, to a large extent, pretty different than what the historically, what we've done in the county. We just haven't had a lot of resources historically. So, for example, Schultz, we did a five-year post-wildfire design storm. That was what we could do with the money we had. And it was first come, first served. Whichever corridor got its drainage easements together first went first, and the one that was second went second. It was a, you voted, in effect, let's say, by putting your drainage easement on the table, signing on the dotted line that you wanted mitigation. So I think there'd be a similar type of approach. We offered it to all, out of the seven that were impacted, five chose to move forward, two didn't. And that was, you know, we respected their choice, and we moved on. Something similar may happen again this time, who knows, right? So, but this time, the impact of the district is much greater. So, you know, I would, my, in terms of my recommendation to the board, is that the corridors where we have existing mitigation, to me, are extremely important, because we already have a, we've already invested there. We already have a responsibility, we have a liability, and we need to make sure that those corridors are performing as best we can within whatever resources we have. It doesn't mean we can't ignore the others, but I do think that there is, to some extent, there is a responsibility there already to try to maintain those facilities in a way that they can perform the best they can. And they are performing well. So we are getting a good return on our investment.
You know, obviously, at this point, it is speculative. We're doing everything we can to get as much federal funding to us for mitigation as we can, and state funding, and I know the city is too. You all have been really great partners in that. We're going to continue to do that. But in the Board of Supervisors, it's also going to try to take a look at some way we can prioritize this, because if we run short, which, boy, what a nightmare, and the decisions we're going to have to make. I'm going to tell you that what I would want to look at in terms of the prioritization, which we, the board, will decide on, is the highest and best use of funds. And for that, on forest, we've been told is probably the best mitigation, and so we're going to want to take and emphasize on forest restoration work, but also matching funds. If our dollars, if $1 goes $4, we're going to want to go there. And that's going to have priority, because we're going to get more money to be able to do what we need to get done in a specific area. Also, we need to look at the number of homes, the level of damages. Again, we want the biggest influence, the biggest bang for our buck that we can if we have to make these kinds of decisions. And then, of course, the degree of cost for funding. You know, there may be a project that we can do that's substantially less, that's going to be able to provide mitigation relief for a large segment of our communities, and that with, compared to a large multimillion-dollar project, the one that is smaller may, in fact, get priority because of that. But these are things that the full board's going to have to decide, and the full board will set the priorities for that. So, and by the way, it's something we don't want to lose sight of, and Lucinda mentioned that. The Flood Control District, we're trying to do what we can to have monies available to do forest restoration work and thinning. And if we don't do that, we're just going to continue to repeat the same process of fires early in the spring and flooding during the monsoon season. We can't afford this. City can't afford it, the county, and most specifically, our communities can't continue to afford this. And we have a huge area of restoration that's got to be prioritized. We all know that, and that's the Upper Rio. And, you know, we are talking until we're blue in the face, or green in the face, because it's Smokey the Bear people. We need to make sure the Forest Service understands that the west side of the peaks, the Upper Rio, has to be prioritized. You know, we do not want to see a devastating wildfire up there, because we know what that's going to mean. And by the way, all of the good work that the city is doing with regards to the Army Corps of Engineers, and the Rio flood control projects, all the good work, we're trying to get done. It's all going to be for naught if the west side of the peaks burns. So we acknowledge that. We need to all work together to make sure that we get forest restoration in Upper Rio number one.
I'd just like, I got to hold it down.
I'd just like to add that these projects that we're looking at for the $150 million are multi-year projects, and so not everything's going to happen at once. There are some projects that, as was mentioned, where we already have mitigation, so those projects are shovel-ready, so we can jump on them quickly. But there are other projects, for example, Government Tank, where there is no engineering yet, so we're starting at ground zero, and so that's going to take some time. So it's not an easy fix, it's very complex, and we're going to go, we're going to have to piecemeal it, because we're not going to be able to accomplish everything between now and next summer. And so it's a long process.
Those are some fascinating insights. Thank you very much for answering that.
Supervisor Spurgit.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I just want to add that also, you know, I think with the amount of monies that we may be able to get, or we might be able to get, and, you know, how are we going to really use those dollars, you know, to be more effective in certain areas? And definitely, we have to prioritize, and that's what we're really trying to do, you know, as Board, as a flood district. And so I just want to say, it's going to take all of us, you know, we're all here, we need to work with everyone that's involved, US Forest Service, the city, and the county working all together. And that's the only way I think it's going to really, you know, where we're really going to get something done with it. But of course, you know, restoration, mitigation, we've already put a lot of dollars into that so far, and, you know, reimbursement's not something that comes easily, and so we're kind of still waiting, too. So we're, it's just like, we wait and see, and we want to get things done. And I want to thank the county staff and all the staff that work with the flood issues, you know, also the burn, the fires that they work out there on, you know, to eliminate a lot of these floodings that could have been worse at one point in time. So I just want to say thank you.
Councilmember Schmone.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, everybody. Great to have you all here, and good to see everyone. I don't really have any questions or anything substantive to add, I just want to express gratitude to all of you and all of us, our staff at the city and the county, and all the partners and all the community members that have been working hard on keeping water out of their homes. This has been a huge lift for our community, and I really appreciate the partnership and the collaboration. Chair Horst, I appreciate the comments about the intention moving forward, and I wish you all well with your discussions and those hard conversations. And I just want to, you know, appreciate the partnership that exists between the county and the city, and hope that we continue strong, working together. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Schmone. Councilmember House.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation and all of the work that's gone into all of these, you know, mitigation measures and the work that's going into the future. I'm just wondering, and I'm not sure who the best person is to answer this particular question, but I'm wondering if, as a result of this historical fire and flooding situation, you know, as we're looking at the mitigations that need to happen in the event that other areas burn, how that might have shifted the perceptions on forest closures, fire restrictions from the state or federal level, to allow for more localized controls or mitigations there to prevent at that point before we get into flood?
Well, that is certainly, I'll tell you, you know, we've now conducted all but one flood corridor meeting, where we meet with the individual areas, and that's come up every single meeting, is what can the county district do to try to influence those decisions that are the authority and responsibility, of course, of the Forest Service? And we've talked a lot about the influence that we've all say attempted and have had to some extent, but there's a lot of concern. I mean, I will say that there's tremendous amount of anger now out there in the public about how those decisions are being made. There was a new protocol put in this last year, and, which I think, in terms of at least how it got interpreted locally, was to leave the forest open, was more apt to have forests remain open. So there's a lot of discussion about that. You're probably aware, Neil Chapman and I are both serving on this Federal Wildland Fire Mitigation and Management Commission, and I think that's going to be a very robust element of discussion within that federal commission. We're supposed to be making recommendations to Congress, and there's like nine topical areas, so it's a large undertaking. But there is a lot of concern across the, particularly the west, about that, the policy and how it's being done, and decisions, how decisions are being made to leave forests open or close them, and a lot of concern. So I haven't seen, I don't think we've seen any official change or anything coming out, but I can tell you that the experience in New Mexico with the prescribed fire that caused the fire there, and they've taken responsibility for that, and, you know, I think so far, are planning to invest upwards of $4 billion. It's, yeah, there's a lot of revisiting, I think, of what, how do we manage this going forward? And that's a difficult situation, because we do need at least a certain level of prescribed fire. I mean, these are fire-adapted communities, and we've got to be able to put fire on the ground. At the same time, there's some areas we cannot put fire in the ground. We would lose the entire forest. For example, a lot of the area of the Upper Rio, that is not a solution. So we have to be able to get in there mechanically thin. So, yeah, I think it's going to be a very hot topic between now and next year, and people are very angry out there. And I know you'll hear about it. Be prepared.
Thank you. Councilmember McCarthy.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Lucinda, it does seem to make sense that forest restoration and thinning needs to be the highest priority. That said, if a fire does start up in the Upper Rio, is there anything we're doing now better than we were, you know, previously, so that we can get those emergency fires put out faster? In other words, would that be more firefighters on call and being very close, or is there anything we can do? You know, obviously, we don't want the fire, but if it comes, we want to get it out quickly. Thank you.
Well, I, one of the elements, well, there's two elements of this federal commission that are focused on that. One element is the cohesive strategy, which has to do with how do you fight fires? What is that process? And then the second is air resources. There's a whole targeted discussion about air resources, and Congress was very emphatic about, they want a recommendation back about even, everything from like, how many airplanes need to be in the sky, and how many, what's the resources, and how do they need to be distributed? Very detailed set of recommendations that this commission's going to be making. Fortunately, there's a set of people on the commission that have expertise in that air resources arena. But clearly, there's a lot of sensitivity about, and concern about, the level of those kinds of resources now. And I think that's an important tool, but then when you have incidences like we did this year, where the winds were too great, they couldn't fly, it doesn't work. I mean, you can't, when we had 70 mile-an-hour winds during tunnel, and then very high winds during pipeline as well, you know, it's too dangerous to put fire response even on the ground, right? And people were frustrated by that, but, I mean, you just, you know, you have to be realistic when the fire's moving with that kind of speed. So, so there's eliminations of every tool. So what do we do? I mean, to me, yes, I think we're looking, they're looking at that, trying to increase like firefighter pay to retain firefighters, those types of things. But the reality, and we will continue to have fires, but the reality is, if we don't turn this dynamic to the proactive, we're just going to keep doing this cycle over and over again. And it's not just here, or not just in the southwest. The west is experiencing this as well. There were fires, Jay told me today, going on in the Cascades, so they're now burning.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Schmone.
Quick piggyback on Councilmember McCarthy's comments. I wasn't going to ask this, but it was going through my head. I assume we're doing outreach and engagement with the public in terms of best practices, maybe those, utilizing those police boards, those orange, I think, sign boards along 180 if people are going out camping. Is that assumption correct, that we're doing proactive outreach?
I think there's a fair amount of outreach that goes on, and I believe, and Jay, correct me if I'm wrong, but the Forest Service has enacted, you know, a fire, campfire ban around the entire peaks. But then it also then comes back to law, you know, how much enforcement do you have, right? And how do you enforce that? And that becomes really the critical question, I think, is how do you enforce that? You know, it takes a, it's a lot of area. It's a lot of physical area. And I know, for example, this year, the sheriff supported, they put the sheriff's plane up in the air and did flights to look for campfires that were burning that had been left, and it's pretty amazing how many they do find, even with all the information, you know, that gets out there about how to better manage. You know, unfortunately, we still have people that are here, and the trees look green, and everybody thinks everything's just fine. And it's not. Our forests are very, very unhealthy, and that is the fundamental issue. They are very unhealthy, and climate change is exacerbating that rapidly.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being here. You know, this summer was challenging, and I try and look at the silver lining and things, and what I really am coming away with, this meeting's important, and we're working together, and I think, moving forward, it is absolutely necessary that we keep this going, open lines of communication. It's a partnership to get through this, and we're going to have more of this in our future. So, thank you. Thank you for bringing the city along with you, and I look forward to more partnership in the future. Thanks.
Vice Mayor, I have two questions, especially as it regards the peaks, in terms of the federal guidelines that are restricting some of our abilities. Number one is, are we making any headway on the ability to use NRCS funds on Forest Service land? Is that gaining any traction to be able to change?
So far, it has not. I mean, we looked at a couple, I should say, Congressman O'Halloran has developed a bill, an amendment that could be added to a bill to try to broaden that. I'll be honest, there's been resistance within NRCS, so within USDA, I think there's a contingent that's supportive. I think the Forest Service is actually pretty supportive of that, NRCS is less supportive. You know, that's just their dynamics, but he hasn't been able to find a vehicle to tag that on, that's gone, you know, been able to go through the process. So he's still very committed to that, so.
Thank you. And then the other question, which I think is going to be even harder, is the ability to work in a designated wilderness area? Is there any traction on that? Because without both of those, we're in a very sorry shape to be able to deal with the west side of the mountain.
That will be an issue that we have to confront. We're going to have to be on the front lines of that. I do think, within this commission framework, that it will come up. I think there's a growing understanding that our wildernesses are not natural anymore. They are not, they are not a natural environment. I think we, most people tend to think wilderness, and they think, oh, that's the way it is naturally. Unfortunately, because we have limited fire in wildernesses as well over, you know, over 100 years, it's, you know, they are not natural anymore, so they are very, very susceptible to fire. And, yeah, that's something we're going to have to confront in this process. But there are a set of acres that we could move forward with, right? I mean, that aren't within wilderness, that will still be important to contributing to reducing down the flood threat to Flagstaff. There will always be a flood threat to Flagstaff. We won't eliminate that. There will always be a flood threat to Flagstaff. We won't eliminate that. It's reducing the level of impact is what this is about.
Certainly. Well, I just want us to be all aware of that, especially on, you know, as December rolls around and we have legislative priorities that we'll be setting, those are things that we, most people don't think about, that we need to make a salient issue as we lobby state and federal government, well, in this case, federal government. Because there's, it's not just about the dollars, it's about where we can spend them. And we're running into issues on where we, we can do so. So hopefully, we'll get, we'll share more information on those difficulties. But just wanted to bring some awareness. And I think both, on both those fronts, it's going to be a tough fight. So I'm very glad you and Neil Chapman are on the commission to be able to help move the needle here. So thank you for your service.
Thank you. All right. Well, thank you very much. And the city's coming up next.
Overton, Public Works Director, City of Flagstaff. We were asked to speak briefly about a few of the elements in the city response and more city-focused elements of, as Lucinda described to you, a very, very large natural disaster. Clearly, the council, you heard a lot tonight that you haven't heard historically about the east side of the pipeline event and incident. On the city side, we have been focused primarily on two major burn scars post wildfire flood effects of one being the museum burn scar in the Spruce Avenue wash and the most recent, of course, pipeline west on the Schultz Creek and Magdalena Wash to the 180 corridor. So this evening, you'll get a very brief presentation, kind of from the city's perspective of things we've been working on. And we wanted to share with you and we'll, of course, have questions towards the end. Wanted to make sure that you were aware of the area. So Lucinda covered a lot of the east side, that Schultz proper to the 89 north side. And then we want to spend just a couple moments to talk about museum and pipeline west. In the museum area, of course, we have had a couple of years and we've seen a lot of mitigations, not only on forest, with the help of the Flood Control District, the county, the Forest Service, all of our private engineers and consultants, and the efforts to reduce sediment and to try to make improvement before it even gets to the community. Does not go unnoticed. In fact, this last summer, we saw great performance of a lot of these now that have been delivered. So, big credit, not only to you, but to the entire community for their patience. And we're starting to see really the benefits of a lot of these projects. And we're not completely completed with all of our engineered ideas and mitigations, but we're getting much closer and we're feeling better about things. So that's a good place to be. I, I will say that in November, the voters are at least reviewing and at least looking at another proposition and bond measure that would allow us to deliver even more mitigation measures in the Spruce Wash, to the tune of about $26 million. The engineering teams are working diligently at the final analysis, the final modeling, and really trying to hone in on what those projects look like and how they perform and how we prioritize them. Towards the end of this month, we're going to have a, a city summit where we really sit down and start thinking about what these projects look like, when and if funded, and how we might deliver those in the most proactive manner in a very, very short time window. Delivering $26 million of future engineered projects is not an easy task, even for a city of our size. So more to come on that. But the Killip detention basins are completed, that on-forest work, the Siren system, it all works together. And it's been a really, really good effort. So thanks to all there. But shifting the focus a little bit to pipeline west, the mitigations we're going to talk about are coming. We're actually going to jump over to pipeline east to talk about a piece of city infrastructure that is really important to the city, but it's on the east side of this fire. So I'm sorry for that confusion. And Stacy BK, I'll let you cover this one. Remember, it's a city infrastructure on the east side, and it's one of two, Landfill Road being the second.
Hi, Mayor, Councilmembers, Board of Supervisors Chair, Stacy Brooklyn-Ags, Grants, Contracts and Emergency Management Director. And thanks, Scott, for the quick introduction. So talk a little bit about the Inter Basin project. A lot of you know, I presented last week to the council, so it's a lot of the same information, but for the Board of Supervisors. The Inter Basin was damaged in the Schultz fire in 2010. It was in 28 locations. It took two years to repair that with federal and state money. We did a historical booklet and produced that, and it won a national award. So we're kind of back in that same situation. We, after the pipeline west fire, you can see on the map, the 28 locations that are here throughout the waterline. But now we've experienced with this pipeline west, new damage up above in the Inter Basin and then down across the road down through Schultz Creek. This waterline is critical to the city. It produces, spring water can peak up to 2 million gallons per day. The design capacity where it flows into, it's a gravity-fed line. For most of you that know a little bit about the waterline, it was clay, concrete, and then ductile iron, which is in the waterline now. And it flows down into the North Reservoir filtration plant where it's treated. And there's about a capacity of 4 million gallons per day. Overall, the Inter Basin water can account for at least 20% daily potable water demand for our peak summer months. So I'm sharing some of this information to, to know how critical this is. The Inter Basin was one of our values at risk during the fire, and they did a good job about saving it. But we've experienced a lot of road damage now up there. We had, in some areas where the road had sloughed off when we first did this in 2010, there was timber walls that we used the down timber to create these timber walls. They've burned during the pipeline fire. So a lot of damage up there. We've been able to do a lot of drone footage, and that's helped us to kind of get an idea of what's happening. And that was done with our capital engineers. And right now, our next steps is to look at a trip record, basically do a pre-designed trip up there, get up into the basin, get dimensions and see exactly what the damages occurred. And then go through, we've been approved for emergency procurement process. And so we're looking at potentially hiring our engineers of record that we did back in 2010 and the contractor and seeing if that's something that we can do with DEMA. Just because they were the engineer of record, they, they're very familiar with the geographic location, which is very difficult terrain to work in. As far as long-term projects, immediate mitigation projects, we've got the 20-acre Schultz Creek sediment and detention basins. And we'll show some pictures in the next slide of that. And it's going very well. An exciting project that the city was able to get onboard and everything aligned with that project. As you know, you've heard a lot about it, having our open space there and right where the creek is coming through and to help mitigate that, that project's been excellent. And a lot of, a lot of great staff and team players on that that helped us get this forward. We're also looking at a NRCS application. We've submitted the damage survey report for the Schultz Creek downstream channel stabilization that comes across the road into the museum property, and that flows all the way down to the 180 culvert. So we have not heard if we've been funded for that yet, but we have been submitting all the reports and everything that they need. We're just in the queue waiting for funding that we hope will come soon to help that stabilization. Next is the long-term mitigation projects, is the vault, box culvert improvements at 180. I know Lucinda and others will talk a little bit more, Ed will, following this slide, about the 180 improvements. But we know that we've had a number of scenarios that, alternatives that we've looked at. And ADOT's working with the team on, within the right-of-way and outside the right-of-way and working to see what that project looks like and see if we can get funding for that, whether it be through the Bipartisan Bill Act or protect funding or wherever that funds. We'll continue to work with ADOT to get that funding. And then I talked a little bit about the Inter Basin pipeline repairs and mitigation. That's one of our long-term. I said it took us two years to complete that work in 2010. And so that, that project will be a long-term project going forward. We've got some damage at Rio Channel at Stavana Way that is under our disaster recovery program. And we'll be looking at that along with the Francis Short Pond sediment dredging. That Rio Channel comes into that pond, you, you heard about it, overtopping. We were able to drop some of the water in the pond, but it is filled with sediment. And so we'll have to look at draining that all the way down and cleaning out that sediment. This is the, the parcels. And we're looking at incorporating some trail access, some trailhead parking, historic interpretation and landscaping, and some potential safety fencing there. We're working with NRCS now to see if we can get some funding, additional funding for that. And there's the basins. Been out there about every week, working and looking at the project and working with our design and contractors and our city project engineer, Adam Mailey. And it's on schedule to be completed, October 26th. Is that crazy, the amount of time after the fire, walking it with NRCS when it was just nothing and it was just open space? And, and seeing the vision of what we could do with this project and getting, you know, NRCS onboard, getting the funding, getting a design engineer and contractor, amazing speed of a project. And it is, it's, I think it's going to work. It's looking great out there. And you can see the three different basins that have been put in. It's, it's great. And if you haven't had a chance to get out there, please do so, or I'm happy to do a tour. I just got, reached out with the National Weather Service, wants to bring out nine people to take a look at it and talk with their engineers and see, see the project. So we're excited to give tours to it. So if anybody's interested in the project, that would be great. And just really thank you to the staff, city staff, NRCS, Emergency Watershed Protection, SWI Design, Fan Contracting, and many others that really worked with us to get this project done. I really hope that it provides good mitigation for the flooding. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ed.
Thanks, Stacy. So Ed Shank, I'm the Stormwater Manager here at City of Flagstaff. I'm going to go over some of the Highway 180 culvert design and some of the background with that. For most of you, it probably is review. The city did contract with Shepherd Westonster, SWI, to provide a variety of alternatives for the improvement of that culvert highway and 180. To give you some background, the culvert goes from a eight-foot by four-foot concrete box to a 60-inch corrugated metal pipe to a 36-inch metal pipe. Now, there's different stages of stormwater development through that community by both ADOT, the county, and the city. So there are different jurisdictions within that kind of convoluted pathway of the culvert before it makes it to the Rio to flag. So obviously, it worked before the fire. We have a stream gauge immediately upstream of there. The largest flow that we've seen in 10 years was 40 CFS, 40 cubic feet per second. The existing infrastructure can take that easily. Obviously, now that we've had the fire, as we know, we see much larger flows. So we are working to provide a conveyance that can put through roughly 950 CFS. This is larger than the 100-year post-fire flood that we would expect. So a very significant improvement. We've, are working through considerable hurdles, including multiple jurisdictions, private property owners, funding, utility conflicts, just to speak to a few of those. After several meetings with our designer, we've come to two alternatives, we've come down to two alternatives off of roughly 14. So we've spent a lot of time working that down to something a little more manageable to present. And this was presented last week at City Council. It's a little hard to see in this graph, but it's up here in the upper right, this is the existing eight-by-four culvert near that American Conservation Experience, across the street from Fire Station Number Five and the Grand Canyon Trust. So our first option is to utilize that same footprint going across ADOT, so across Highway 180, and then continuing that down through the Grand Canyon Trust property to the city parcel on the county island, the Fire Station Number Five, where we would daylight it, provide an open channel concept that would need another culvert crossing in this private parcel before hitting the Rio to flag. So again, roughly 950 CFS in this concept, as well as in Concept Two or Alternative Two. In this one, we would actually reconfigure the open channel upstream of Highway 180. So we'd have an open channel, a new box culvert that would go under Highway 180 more directly, so a shorter reach through the highway. And then the rest of it would be underground, a box culvert through that Mount Calvary Lutheran Church property. So part of their parking lot and part of their athletic field before daylighting at the Rio to flag. Just quickly, we do have a decision matrix for this moving forward. Can kind of see the two alternatives, the top one being that Alternative One, the bottom one being Alternative Two. Green is good or better. Yellow is kind of intermediate and red is, is the harder option, if you will. So this is what we're working through right now. We're going to have some more meetings with this, starting next week, between the ADOT County and the city, to help move this forward. With that, I'll move on to Sam.
All right. Thanks, Ed. All right. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Chair Horseman, District Directors. So we're at a point now where we're trying to get the community in a better spot before we see winter. It's right around the corner. We know we're going to have impacts. There always is every year. Within city limits, we see different impacts than you would see outside of those city limits. And access is a big issue. So we've been working with residents to ensure that they can have access into their properties through the winter time. Some of that has been dropping pallets at some of the residents so that they can stack their own sandbags on them and we haul them away. We've also coordinated with several of the residents within the museum flood hazard area so that they could get their barrier removed, again, giving them access through the winter. But our goal has to been to leave that place as good as we can for the winter time, knowing that we may or may not see impacts next year, but not completely removing everything. Our recommendation has never been to remove your mitigations, but if you choose to, we'll help do it in a clean and safe manner and support you through that operations. Again, anybody who has questions can call our call line like we've had up all year long, the 213-2102. And again, just preparing for winter time, understanding there's still impacts out there. As you've heard, there's a ton of decisions that still need to be made, a ton of projects that still need to be delivered. And again, we'll probably be in the midst of it again next year, but just trying to make sure we support our residents the best we can. With that, I think we're at questions.
Thank you. Sam, any questions at this time? Councilmember Schmone.
Thank you, Mayor. Sam, quick question for you. I, again, on the same line, I thought of outreach and education and empowerment. I remember seeing a video, I think done by the county, about how to best place sandbags from like 10 years ago, I think from Schultz. Are we doing any kind of more updated videos to, to explain to the community, whether it's how to identify when to reset bags, or just, just the basics of all the different mitigation efforts that they should know at this point?
You know, we, we've tried about 200,000 different ways to stack them better, and it just hasn't worked out. So what we're doing is sticking to that same video. What we've learned is that technology, as much as I wish it would have changed, hasn't. So we've kind of left it at that. I think it was a really good video done by the Flood Control District. And we use some of the FEMA videos as well. And Sarah puts all that information on the website, as well as, I believe, the Flood Control District there.
And Sam, I don't mean new approaches. I just mean like, if we can make more updated videos that aren't 10 years old or however long it is.
Okay. Are you just looking for a more modern-looking video?
Fast. The ones that make Jim, Councilmember McCarthy, dizzy. Yeah.
All right. Perfect. We'll work on that. I'll see if the mayor can come out and help us with that. He's, he's got this down to a science. So, yeah, thank you.
Chair Horseman.
Before you go too, too far away, just checking to see, are you working with, like, United Way Northern Arizona and others to help with some of the cleanup, if you will, for assistance on the winter and helping those remove sandbags and, and... assistance on the winter and helping those remove sandbags and and restack sandbags for a while?
Right now, our internal city incident management team is managing all those requests. So as they come in, we've been shifting crews away to go out and load them up. Right now, the ask has been fairly small from the city's response side, other than picking up and dropping off pallets. We don't have a whole lot more to offer. We haven't heard from too many homes, and I have been watching my email, that needed assistance removing the sandbags. But as they do, we'll work with them.
And so if we get calls from members of the residents here in the city, where should we refer them to?
Just have them call that 213 number, our city's 213-2102. And then we'll route that accordingly. If they need volunteer assistance, we have a whole volunteer coordination group, and they will help support that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. So and then Ed Shank, I was going to ask Ed real quick, and the 218 improvements, and I take it is that the City of Flagstaff, are they going towards Option Two? Is that correct?
I believe so, yeah. I mean, both alternatives are on the table, but I believe Alternative Two is the preferred one.
Very good. Thanks.
I just wanted to add that certainly for the east side in particular, we are strongly recommending that everyone maintain their mitigation. We are not going to be out of this for several years. And again, going back to what are the level of events that we've seen, rainfall events, and what we could experience. And importantly, the district doesn't have the resources to put money into sandbag production again next year. We have a good stockpile to get us prepared for next year on the east side. I think the city's got its stockpile going, but we are not going. Right now, every dollar needs to go into long-term mitigation. And so we're really employing people, please do not take your mitigation down. And, you know, if you have to move bags to the side or whatever, certainly retain them. And if we place them, if you are elderly or disabled, we're not going to have the resources to come back and do that, except for volunteer resources, and we'll work through United Way. But, you know, sometimes we can mobilize those resources, and sometimes there aren't resources. So it's really, really important that people maintain their mitigation.
Mayor Faimel, just one more comment, and I just want to congratulate the city. That 20-acre Schultz Creek Detention Basin, getting that together, getting that engineered, getting everyone out there and getting it done, I mean, I got to tell you, very impressive. And and thank you so much for all of your hard work and your staff. I mean, it was it was absolutely lightning speed, and you all deserve lots of kudos. So thank you so much for all your efforts, really, on behalf of the community. It's just fabulous. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, three months from the first flood till seeing that completed is just, I'm still picking my jaw off the floor. So it's really amazing work and shows how well partnerships and coordination go to getting these things completed for the protection of our city. All right. With that, I think we are done with the presentation. It's four.
No, we have to resolve back as the Board of Supervisors.
Oh, you have to, okay.
We're now, sorry, sorry, Mayor. We're still the Flood Control District. We have a lot of hats when you're in the County Board of Supervisors, and one of our hats is the Flood Control District Board of Supervi, or Board of Directors. We need to go back to the Board of Supervisors. Do I have a motion?
So move.
It's motion by Supervisor Brigade. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are now the Board of Supervisors. Do you notice a difference?
Thank you. Well, it is 4:40 right now, so if there's any requests for a quick break, I'm welcome to take it. Just 10 minutes, real quick. We'll be back here at 4:50. I think we are ready to start. All right, Sarah, time for our regional plan update.
Thank you very much, everyone, for allowing us to provide you an update tonight. My name is Sarah Decter. I'm the City of Flagstaff Comprehensive and Neighborhood Planning Manager. And my co-pilot on the regional plan update is Melissa Shaw, who is the Long Range Planner for the county. Also, Michelle McNulty, this Planning Director, and Jay Christelman are here today as part of our team to give you this update. We last updated you in June of 2022 separately at a Board of Supervisors meeting and City Council meeting to discuss our methods of outreach going into the next phases of public engagement, funding, and strategic direction. This update tonight is really to keep you abreast of what has been done in the last six months and what will come for the team and for the Board of Supervisors, City Council, and Planning and Zoning Commissions in the next year. So these are our guiding process principles. I like to keep them up here so we remember that we, these are our lessons learned that we're carrying forward to make our process successful. This is our Public Participation Update Process Diagram, and we are currently now in Phase Two. So Phase One was what we were working on last year, which was getting all of our data organized. We held 21 regional snapshot webinars over the course of 2021 and 2022. We also had a consultant who created art boxes, and we'll talk a little about those today. But now we are actually in the visioning process of talking about what is possible for our community's future, our region's future, and what the vision that the community holds, and how we should be incorporating that into our future land use, water, and transportation planning. So one, I'm going to give you an update on a few things we did during Phase One. The first one is we visited 21 city and county boards, commissions, and councils, and held a process with them that is called a SWOT, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And so at these meetings, commission board and committee members assessed the current plan for its strengths and weaknesses, and then looked at the opportunity for the update to either create good opportunities moving forward or what threats there might be to the project's success. We attached the full report of the 561 comments we received from the appointed individuals on these committees to today's packet. But I just want to talk a little bit about some of the general strengths and weaknesses. So generally, the strength that the this group thought their current plan has is that it's broad and comprehensive and is very thorough in the topics it covers. There is a strong depth of the goals and policies, and that the plan is actually used, and it feels like it's usable. They can see how it's influenced decision-making in the last 10 years, and those were generally seen as strengths for what we have done and been doing since 2014. Generally, the weaknesses brought forward that were pretty consistent in multiple committees were the lack of goal and policy prioritization. There's 98 goals and over 500 policies, and the lack of prioritization among them has been seen as a difficulty in implementing the plan. There was also acknowledgement that the last time we did the plan update, the list of implementation strategies was not adopted as part of that document. It was offered to council and the Board of Supervisors at the time, but it was deferred. And there was a desire to see a more robust effort at getting strategies that fit priorities in this effort. And then also that there was not enough information in the current plan on how to address trade-offs or competing goals. So these are very valuable insights from folks who have been working in the city and county in many different ways in the last five or six years, and getting their thoughts to move forward. In addition, the city and county folks have been to 12 community events throughout the summer. We took those art boxes that we were working on in the spring to the county fair, to the FUSD Steam Day, and to many of the concerts in the park. And as you can see, some of the art was very abstract, but there was actually a lot of great conversations had, as there were also a lot of adults and teenagers who sat down and just took a few minutes to put their reflections on paper, share their thoughts with us. And then also, when kids like this young lady sat down and took some time with us, often the parents came by and also talked and got on the email list. And so through these efforts throughout the summer, we were able to grow our e-newsletter outreach from 60 to 320 individuals in the community. We are also, we are switching our efforts with these art boxes, which were funded by the Beautification Public Art Commission for the city, into schools and shelters. We held two weeks ago a training session with Northland Family Health Care's shelter workers, and they were starting to use the box in their trauma-informed therapy environment on several topics. We also have been talking to FUSD and other schools about being in classrooms this year and creating opportunities for youth engagement that stretch out in and throughout Phase Two. We are currently in the process of wrapping up our visioning workshops, and this is important because the last two workshops are tonight at 6:00 PM at the Murdoch Center or online. And then the last one will be on November 14th at the Fort Valley Lodge, which is at the corner of US 180 and Snowball Road. The format for these visiting, visioning sessions has been a short sign-in welcome, a brief presentation, and then four stations where people can offer their input. We've had 105 people attend the workshops in person and a few people online. I don't remember what the count was to add for that. And then the last two workshops will be the same as the others, but it's really that great opportunity to attend. We've had a lot of good feedback on the fact that during a busy election cycle and at a time where people are seeing a lot of events as the pandemic's ending, that we provided a large number of locations and times and dates. That might not be something we can sustain for the entire project, but it was certainly well-received this fall. We had, through this process, 74 evaluation forms provided. Mostly, people felt very positively, but there were two areas of improvement that are worth bringing forward and into the considerations of the project. First, there is still distrust in the community of that long-range plans are meaningful in terms of how they influence the decision-making. And we've seen this in the meeting evaluations by a pretty mediocre or moderate response to the question of, do people trust that the comments they leave with us at those meetings will be part of the process moving forward? So that is really an effort we're going to have to make in both our actions and our words going forward, that we're emphasizing that in this process. We also had quite a few comments on people who are just ready to jump into the details and didn't understand why we were doing higher-level visioning first. And that's because they're the people who are ready to jump into the details. And there's lots of people we want to welcome to this table who need more time to warm up to the topics and position themselves where they want to be in these conversations. So that's some of the things we've learned in the last few months, and we highly encourage anyone who maybe got that postcard and, you know, stuck it to the fridge and forgot about it, to go ahead and get online and think about attending one of these next two meetings. Our strategic ingredients for a regional plan that we've been really focused on in Phase One and this first part of Phase Two has been our strategic organizational capacity and ability to do the work, our community vision and values, and the intergovernmental coordination between the city, the county, metro plan, and other agencies. We're really about to, in Phase Two, as we make this transition, jump into the data analysis and forecasting and the baseline work of existing specific and area plans and what future area planning or district planning might be needed throughout the region. And so to do that, on tomorrow night's consent agenda for the City Council, is the approval of a contract to provide scenario planning as the baseline for this work. This is a rough sketch of our timeline. It was included in your packet as well. But what I really want to emphasize with it is that there will be several key check-in points for the city and counties' elected officials and the Planning and Zoning Commissions throughout 2023 to endorse the work being done in these public workshops and scenario planning. So first, we'll be with you in some form in January 2023 to introduce the consulting team and also talk about the process in more depth. And this will also include an initial review of what's called the external factors. So external factors are things like recessions, fire and flooding, changes due to change in climate, that we will be including in the scenarios. So when we do our scenario planning, we're comparing them to futures that could look very different than today. I think we've all got a little warm-up for that conversation by Lucinda and Scott and Stacy's presentation earlier tonight. Those external factors will be developed with staff, a technical advisory group that will be brought together of people with expertise in these areas, and also in public workshops. We will also start developing initial scenario themes in the spring, and in April 2023, we hope to bring you back those scenario themes so we can talk about which scenarios should we take into the modeling and how we carry those forward. And then the modeling will mainly be happening in the summertime, when it's a little harder to get people to come to public meetings, too, which is good timing for Flagstaff. But that will also mean that in the fall, we really come back with what will be called report cards. So every scenario will have a report card, and we'll tell people, how does this scenario perform in these multiple potential futures that we identify? From there, there will be a preferred scenario selected, and that will work into policy translation. This process will give us a greater opportunity to do the policy prioritization and discuss trade-offs in a really meaningful way and how we would like to incorporate them into the next plan. There's a couple project needs that we've been discussing as a team but have not been able to fully actualize up to this point. We do have translation services available for any meeting in any setting, but we really are finding that that's not effective in reaching our Spanish-language population, and that what we really need to do is find a community-based organization or individuals who would like to actively facilitate Spanish-speaking forums for different steps along this path. And as we get to scenario planning, those topics are large and complex, and having someone say it in English, translate it, and then have to translate back what they're hearing from Spanish is probably not going to be as effective as we'd hope. So you may see us talking with partners, or you may be able to help us network with partners who would be interested in helping with this. We also have coordination with the County Comprehensive Plan Update, which is scheduled to begin in early 2023. This comprehensive plan, which is covers all of Coconino County, also has a 10-year update timeline, much like the regional plan does. So the last piece we wanted to talk about today was the appointment of a committee for Phase Three. In the last two conversations we've had with Board of Supervisors and City Council, there has been feedback that there's a desire to convene a committee to be reviewing the draft plan as it's created chapter by chapter. That time to recruit and appoint people will be upon us in 2023. And so staff is planning to schedule meetings with the city and county clerks to discuss this process sometime in January. And then hopefully, we'll follow up with separate work sessions for the City Council and Board of Supervisors in March of 2023. So if you can't tell, you'll see me and Melissa quite a lot next year. It'll be a busy year for us. We hope to bring you some options on what could be done in terms of committee composition, the number of members, rules and procedures, and methods of soliciting and making appointments at that future meeting. And so that is my brief update to you all for the day. I'm happy, Melissa and I are happy to answer any questions about the project or get any feedback at this time, and we can also schedule later conversations if we want to dive into anything in more detail.
Great. Thank you, Sarah. Any questions?
I just want to say I appreciate the thought of having Spanish, completely Spanish workshops. One thing you might want to look into is simultaneous English-Spanish translation organizations like Northern Arizona Interfaith Council. They have these packets where one person is translating simultaneously, and everybody in Spanish has a little earpiece so they can listen to it as it's going on, and it cuts down on translation time.
Thank you.
Councilmember House, and then Councilmember Schmody.
Thanks so much, Sarah, for the presentation. And I just wanted to share, I was really excited to see the reference to the art presentations in particular going to the schools and shelters, because that's such an important depth of engagement that that we can get into, particularly with the shelter services. In reading through the comments, I did see a lot, especially from the Tri-Diversity Councils and and the city's diversity group, discussion of engagement with tribal communities in particular. And so I'm wondering how that's, how you're looking at that to be furthered, basically, into the next couple processes of this.
Yes, thank you for that question. We will be working with Rose Towe, the city's coordinator for Indigenous issues, to work with the more formal government of the tribal communities and have those conversations. But we've already started meeting with groups that are folks who live in Flagstaff. We're working, actually, on Wednesday, I'm going to, the Native American Clubs are having a joint meeting from Coconino and Flagstaff High School, and we're going to go meet with them. And the whole meeting is going to be about long-range planning and land use planning in in the community and how it can be more inclusive of them as individuals and their families. And so some of those are where we're showing up, is who we're reaching, but we know that there's populations that we still haven't caught into our process yet and that we don't maybe have a relationship with yet where they are ready to understand what their role could be in this process. And so we keep working those community relationships and hopefully that we will, and are hopeful that by, especially by next fall, when we're doing scenario choosing, that we would have brought a lot of those people onto the process.
Thank you. Councilmember Schmody.
Well, I'm going to stay consistent with everything I've ever said up here about video engagement, and that it'd be great if we could do some videos, maybe a series of them throughout this process. And I'm just thinking about the distrust that you mentioned and how to bridge that gap, and that's a tough one, right? But maybe if people see videos of people, key community members, multiple languages, you know, and I really want to emphasize the multiple languages. I've yet to see a video, I think, that really does not simply speak in English. And I really appreciate your comments about NAIC, and I was thinking the same thing. But yeah, thank you for the update and the presentation and all of your work. You and the team do a great job, and we appreciate it, and I'm looking forward to the process.
Thank you.
Anything else? Not saying anything. Thank you, Sarah. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
That brings us down to agenda item number seven, Military Installation Sustainability Grant update.
Mayor and councilmembers, and Chair Horstman and Supervisor Vasquez, good evening. Jay Crystalman, Coconino County Community Development. Before I turn this over to Matrix, who is our consultant for the Military Installation Sustainability Grant, MIS, there's a little history that some on the elected officials weren't here a couple of years ago when we were working on what was called the Joint Land Use Study. So that is essentially a compatible use document, study rather, that emphasizes our community's needs as well as the needs of the missions of our military installations, which of course are Camp Navajo and the Naval Observatory. So one of the items that came out of the Joint Land Use Study was Janice sitting back there somewhere. There she is. So it recommended a joint city-county-funded position for dark sky compliance. So our Board of Supervisors adopted the Joint Land Use Study as an amendment to our county comprehensive plan in the winter of 1920, and that elevated the county as an applicant for future grants. And I got a call from our project manager with the Department of Defense and said, hey, you guys are in an elevated position to go after additional grant funds. So I went to work with our partners, the city included, writing another grant that incorporates essentially all of the elements that came out of the Joint Land Use Study, which was then called the Joint Land Use Study Implementation Grant. Of course, the DOD changed the name of the program to Military Installation Sustainability. So they're all intertwined, and it's one long, fluid process. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions before I introduce Matrix.
Not seeing any at this time, so please proceed.
Thank you. And Celeste and Ed, out there in virtual world somewhere, feel free to share your screen. Thank you. There's Celeste.
Well, good evening, everybody, and thank you. You all have been very patient, and hopefully we'll be able to provide you an update on what we've been working on. And thank you, Jay, as well for the great introduction. So we're very excited to have the opportunity to be your partners as well, to continue the great work and partnership that all of you have been doing with both the installations up here through the continued military installation sustainability. So tonight, what we're going to be doing, could you go to the next slide, please? Well, before I do that, I should do an introduction. So who am I? I'm the project manager. I'm Celeste Warner with Matrix Design Group, and also joining me tonight is Ed Boyk. Ed is our deputy project manager and doing the heavy lifting day-to-day and working closely with both the county and the city. So he's going to be doing most of the presentation, but I'm going to give you a little bit an overview of what the MIS is. So we're going to be going through really two major items today. So I just stated what is the Military Installation Sustainability Project, because it's really not just one study or item or product, and we'll get into that in a bit. But our key focus this evening is really going to be on the dark sky non-conforming lighting task. And then we're going to open it up for Q and A, questions and answers. So I'm going to skip right over that first part because Jay did a great introduction that this is a continuation of the Joint Land Use Study, and it is federally funded, a 90-10 local grant match fund. So the MIS, the Military Installation Sustainability Study, or project, I should say, is six different mini-projets. In this instance, we call them tasks. And these tasks, tonight, we're going to be really focused in on number one and just a portion really of number two, but really mostly number one. So I'm going to walk through each one of those six tasks, talk a little bit about what they are, where we are in the process, and I'll hand it over to Ed to go into the database. So number one, task number one, which is the non-conforming dark sky database. Before I go any further, you should be really proud because this dark sky database has been selected by the grantor, which is the Office of Local Defense Community Cooperation, formerly OEA, Office of Economic Adjustment. They have selected this project to be their signature best-practice project within their guide for all defense communities across the United States. So that's something that all of you should be very, very proud of. So I thought I'd just share that little tidbit of information. So the database, I'll just do at high level. It is really a tool for enforcing non-compatible exterior, non-conforming lighting. So it's a, with the resources, the constrained resources that you all have, both at the county and the city, it is a very big job to really enforce exterior non-conforming lighting. So we had the privilege to put together a database that is web-based, and it is accessible at all types of devices, and it is, I'm going to have Ed go into it, but it really promotes efficiencies. And you'll see the opportunity, I believe, where you'll see efficiencies in compatibility for the dark sky in literally day-to-day as the enforcement will improve as well because of this tool. So task number two, which is the outreach and the education campaign. So task number one is complete. You'll get an update on that. Task number two is also complete, is the outreach and the education campaign. The bottom line is that task that is complete here is basically a playbook, a playbook of action items that are detailed step-by-step in what, who will be responsible for doing what, what action. But the overall purpose of those actions is to, is twofold. Number one, increase the public awareness of the value that both Camp Navajo and the Naval Observatory provides to the community. So many people, number one, either don't even know that they exist in the community. Number two, don't understand the full, broad value that they provide to the community, both non-monetary as well as monetary, the economic impact. And number three, I should say number two, the overall secondary part, is what they can do as an individual and as part of the community to provide that cohabitation that they could assist in making sure that the missions at both the Naval Observatory as well as Camp Navajo can continue on into the future, not only the missions today, but also new missions as they continue to grow. So it talks about, there's brochures on how an individual at a, their individual home or a business on wildfires and as well as the dark sky lighting and other items as well. So compatible land use, so it's very, very informative. So that's the outreach and education campaign. Number three is the forest industry feasibility analysis task. This task is also complete. It basically focused in on doing a targeted market analysis and an industry feasibility analysis to identify what type of industrial uses or land uses could possibly be attracted for 1,000 acres within the fence line of Camp Navajo and/or right outside of the fence line of Camp Navajo at Belmont, which is one of the unincorporated communities of the county. And very, very thorough analysis, and I really encourage everybody to read it. The results of the study, and this is going to be high-level, but it goes into detail of the types of industries ranked, and they focused in on what type of industries are not only focused on the target market, but what is compatible and compatible with those missions. And so the compatibility component was mixed with that market and industry analysis. They were ranked in the top three, of course, forest, forestry was number one industry. The second one was warehousing, and the third was medical device manufacturing. So, and those go, as I said, into a lot more detail. The fourth task or individual project is what we call the legislation and the strategic engagement task. Now, that task is actually underway currently, and it's focused in on developing model legislation to protect the Camp Navajo and the Naval Observatory mission to make sure that it's not closed, for whatever reason. I don't like to say the word BRAC because every single day, the DOD, the National Guard, they are racking and stacking missions internally, and they are moving missions from one installation to another, and they're either closing portions of installations, and in some places, they're actually closing all of them. And it's not even under BRAC, which is very bad because that means that defense communities do not have the opportunity to obtain federal funding to address all of the impacts from that loss of a certain mission, i.e. jobs within the community and/or the overall impact to the other direct and indirect economic impacts from that. So that model legislation is going to be drafted or is being drafted currently. And in addition to the model legislation that we're drafting right now, we're putting together what we call a strategic engagement plan. And that engagement plan is basically another playbook that looks at, in working with legislators and the county at the state level, on how we are going to gain support at all levels so when the legislation is brought forward, that we have all of the stakeholders within the community at all levels supporting this legislation. So, and the legislation, it would be very similar to some of the one military legislation that currently exists that supports compatible land use and mission protection for Luke Air Force Base, Davis-Monthan, and then the Yuma Marine Corps Base. So that's focused right now, and we should hopefully be done within a couple months on that legislation one by December. Number five, the, what's, for in short, it's called MIR, but it's really called the Military Installation Resiliency. This one's going to be very important, and I think it's going to hit the hearts of all of you, and it's something that you've heard and we've been, you've all been discussing earlier during this meeting. And that is focused on, it's a new program. I should say that the Office of Local Defense Community Cooperation, for short, is called OLDCC, the grantor who's federally funding this component of it, developed this program almost about a year and a half to two years ago. And it addresses community and military impacts for making sure that these installations and communities work together to make sure they're resilient. And they're resilient from any extreme weather events and/or human-induced hazards, from tornadoes to hurricanes to wildfires to flooding. The list goes on. So as I stated, we, you did discuss all of the impacts from flooding. We talked about wildfires. Specifically, this task, the Military Installation Resiliency comprised of this component of the MIS, focuses in on just the wildfire component of it. And what the MIR, we're currently in the process of developing the Military Installation Resiliency Study, and what we are doing, in the process of doing, is we are assessing the risk and vulnerabilities of wildfire threats. And along with that, we're developing and prioritizing the different projects that would mitigate those threats and those risks, and those projects would be, you know, focused on impactful projects, and then identifying different funding sources. And the success of that is going to be how you, what we call leverage, mixing the different colors of money. Most of it would probably be federal funding sources that would be funding these types of actions or projects that would be coming out of the MIR. But they've been very successful in some of the other areas and defense communities that have already stood up the MIR. So that one, I think, would be something close that you want to be focused in on here as we continue to move forward, and that is scheduled to be completed by the end of the year. And our final task is the economic impact study. This is the one task that may go further into next year, only because the county, the city, nor does Matrix have any control over the information that is required to develop the overall economic impact study. We are dependent on information from both the National Guard as well as from the Navy, the Naval Observatory, and to get their information to do their economic impact study. This economic impact study is going to provide all of you what the true economic impact is to your community at all levels. Not only the direct impact, the indirect impact, and tertiary impact. And so in doing so, we do need all of the key data and support information from both the installations. They've been working very diligently to get all of that information to us. So we were promised to get that information this month, here in October, and we are hoping to turn that around as quickly as possible. So that is the very last task or mini-project that is part of the overall MIS, military installation. At this point, I'd like to hand it over to Ed to go into the details of the signature project that the OLDCC has identified for all defense communities as best practices. Over to you, Ed. Thanks.
Thank you, Celeste. And thank you, supervisors and counselors. My name is Ed Boyk. I'm the deputy day-to-day project manager for this project, and I really am excited to highlight and discuss in more detail this non-conforming dark sky lighting database component of the project. So I'm going to get a little technical, but I promise you I won't bore you because I'll go at a high level. The really interesting thing about this is that this database is a cloud-based database. It's available online through the web from a variety of different devices. It could be cell phones, tablets, laptops, computers in the office, at home, elsewhere. It's hosted on Coconino County's RGIS server, and it easily integrates with everything that's already been in place. Our GIs team worked quite often, quite intimately with Coconino County and the City of Flagstaff to make sure that this database was useful and easy to use and portable so that it could be used well after this project was complete and continue to be an asset for management of these non-conforming properties moving forward. and continue to be an asset for management of these non-conforming properties moving forward. Importantly, even though it's available through all those different mechanisms, it's secure. It's not open to the public. It's not open to just random people. There's logins, passwords, and it's controlled under the same management that's already in place through Coquenino County's RGIS online system. This was critically important to have a strong foundation for the project, because this database, with its construction being the way it is, it allows it to be used by all those different devices and applications and front-ends and information display panels to give you ease of data entry, ease of data management, good reporting, good progress tracking. It's really a really nice piece of software as a total package. What it also does is that it relates all the information together so that when they're out, when a dark sky specialist or a surveyor is on a site, they're entering that information. It's comprehensive and relevant to that parcel. And I have all some examples to show in the upcoming slides. So comprehensive that allows for the storage of, you know, different types of media, video if chosen, but mostly the photos. The photos will represent those lights that are in compliance or not in compliance as the different properties are surveyed around Flagstaff and Coquenino County. So the key piece of data entry was the Field Maps Mobile Application, which was used by surveyors late last year to build the base of the database. This would be the first 238 parcels that were identified in working with the dark sky specialists for the City of Flagstaff and Coquenino County, as well with the project, the Matrix Project Team, to identify those sites that were most in need or should be considered first for their compliance or non-compliance with the outdoor lighting codes. So this Field Maps application was used on either tablets or cell phones, and it allowed the surveyors or dark sky specialists to go to those sites and geolocate, geolog, every single one of those lighting fixtures to that site, record that specific information about the lighting fixtures, everything that they would possibly need to catalog and enforce. And we did, like I had mentioned, we did complete the inventory of 238, and that provides the base to build from for this database. So there was three tools that were developed once the data was entered through that Field Maps application to analyze or visualize the data. There was a parcel reporting application, a lighting survey progress dashboard, and a dark sky program progress dashboard, which I'll kind of go through on the next slide so you can see how they differ and are similar. The parcel reporting application was really a web map for viewing that information that was located in the field. So it was really about clicking on a parcel, seeing what was discovered on site, getting a report, show the different counts of different fixtures, whether they were incandescent bulbs or fluorescent bulbs or LEDs. But it also included the parcel information. So I'm going to show that really quick by clicking on this link here. And I have it. It will pop up, I promise you. And it's this one. Okay, so here's the lighting survey results data. I'm sorry, wrong one. It was this one. So this one's showing the parcels that were identified. And if I zoom in, I could see, you know, the aerial map of the City of Flagstaff. And each one of these icons represents a light fixture on a piece of property that was of those 238 parcels that was identified for a variety of different characteristics. You see as I zoom in, different levels of information pop up, these letters that distinguish the different lights that were on the site. If I click on it, I can see the parcel information. If I click on the photograph, I can see that this is a parcel with a photo on it. It has an attachment for the photo. If I click on the photo, now I can see the photo that was taken to assess the lighting. This was just one representing the site. So we got information that also tells us about the context of the site. If I zoom in further and I click, say, this one right here, number E, there's no picture for this one because there's probably a picture attached to one of the other Es, but it tells me it's a wall-mounted light, not on the overhanger canopy. We don't know if it's non-conforming or not. We don't know what kind of light fixture it is, but we have that information cataloged. If I click on the same thing, I know it's a pole light. Unknown if it's non-conforming. It needs further assessment. It's a fully enclosed lamp shielding. If I click on the photo one image, there's the picture of the light pole that was represented on that. So this front-end, this is showing us all the information that exists in the database for all the parcels. And that's the parcel reporting application. So it's a pretty neat database. It just shows everything that's available that's been cataloged thus far. And since this is a live database that's on Coquenino servers as the dark sky specialists find areas of the community to survey, they can add to it, they can update it, and all this information updates in real time. So, moving on. So the lighting survey progress dashboard, this was the tracker we used in the project to manage the progress of the initial database, making sure we tracked which parcels were inventoried, the information that, get a quick understanding of some of the informational characteristics of the different lighting, and also to make sure that we were able to track and survey all 238 parcels that were originally identified. So when I open this one, you'll see that this 10K here shows that we've cataloged on these 238 parcels over 10,000 unique lighting fixtures on those parcels. And that number will only grow larger as this database continues to be flushed out. The pie chart on the right is showing you the mix of different lighting styles that were cataloged, overwhelmingly fluorescent, the metal halide, incandescent, and so on. So we can see that there's a variety of lights here. This will update dynamically as the database updates. So that as non-compliant sites update their fixtures, the database can be updated. And you'll see that lighting will change from being fluorescent to more LEDs or whatever would be the appropriate fixture for their use case. Again, the progress gauge was a tracker we used, the dark sky specialists used as well to ensure that all those parcels were inventoried, that were intended to be inventoried. And you can get the detailed information as well from this lower half of the window as well. So there's a lot of different ways to get that information. And moving on. This is the dark sky program progress dashboard. This was a cloud-based database. Again, tracks the yearly progress, shows the number of non-conforming, shows the number of parcels brought into compliance by various metrics, various metrics such as year, month, or week. And this is the one that could be actively used as more of like a management tool as the program for outdoor lighting compliance moves forward. And I'll just show that one briefly as well. And you can see that the green illustrates those parcels that were identified and then surveyed. We have one that was brought into compliance so far this year, but this certainly can be updated as they move along. You can see how our inventory progress moved for the parcels that were inventoried on the original dataset. This can be useful for tracking the progress for, you know, special areas that need to be assessed or those identified target areas that should be included or added to the database for assessment. And if you click on these parcels, you get much of the same information that we were getting in the other ones as well. So it's just another way to see the information and analyze the information and get reporting back about how the compliance activity is occurring and how successful it is. So creating the database isn't enough, because, you know, your consultants could always create wonderful databases, wonderful tools, and then give it to you and send you on your way and say, "Good luck." But in this case, there is a comprehensive sustainability plan that was created to help manage the long-term success of this database. Instructions for new employees to be onboarded and understand how to use these tools so that they're entering the information correctly the first time and not having to be re-entered later. Creating that sense of consistency across all the different employees and all the people who may be using this. So this database sustainability plan really is a wonderful tool that ensures that as staff changes, as needs change, you have a playbook. We've been using playbook a lot today, but you have something that helps you, an instruction manual to help you move forward and make sure that this database continues to be relevant and useful and accurate through the future. One of the other pieces that was a component of this was doing an aerial survey, and this was fairly innovative. We, in working with the dark sky specialists, identified several different sites around Coquenino County and Flagstaff that should be examined with a drone for night surveys. And what the intention here was to do is to get a bird's eye view of sites that may not have been accessible to those surveyors that went out and looked at the parcels to build the database so that we could see and make a determination, a generalized determination about those light fixtures on those various sites. So I'm going to show a couple of slides of the results of those photos that we're taking. They look to identify the light intensity. We tried to identify those single-point light fixtures, such as parking lot lights or floodlights over storage yards or aerial yards. There's four different areas that were looked at. Over 2,500 photos were taken. 400-plus acres were flown. This, like I said, is going to help with the on-the-ground teams to identify areas of where they should focus their enforcement or survey activities in the future. And it's also baseline. It can give you a really good idea of before-and-after conditions so that if you go to a site that has non-compliant lighting or non-conforming lighting, and then after they update it, you could fly a drone out there again and take another look and see the difference between the before condition and after condition. And it's rather compelling. So on the left is a site, Flagstaff Ranch Residential Neighborhood. And it shows you lighting that is much more subdued, more in compliance with the code. And it's not lighting up everywhere. It's really focusing on eliminating where the elimination is needed. And contrasting that is the CEMEX plant and some neighboring parcels on the right photo. And this was just to illustrate the differences between compliant lighting and non-compliant lighting as seen from these drones. And as I said, all this drone aerial imagery has been provided to Coquenino County and Flagstaff as part of this project. It serves as the baseline. It's something that could be useful moving forward for future identification of sites. Here's another aerial, just showing some context around that CEMEX site and other areas around that to see the different lighting that was examined. So all these aerial photographs were stitched together to create a mosaic of the dark sky lighting conditions. And these were flown last October in Flagstaff from a, you know, meeting all public requirements for flight. Worked with the FAA. There was intention to have additional flying occur near Flagstaff Airport. The conditions did not cooperate with us. The weather didn't work on that day. We had high winds, and that was impacting the drone use as well. But this was just to show what can be put together through those aerial surveys. So, yeah, the last component of this dark sky task was outreach and education, because having the data, being able to track the data is rather important. But there's a need to make sure that the community understands the value to coming into compliance with the outdoor lighting codes and also understand what the outdoor lighting code is to begin with. So I'm going to show you three different brochures that have been generated. As Celeste noted, these are partially part of the education and outreach campaign and can be used for some of the tasks in that. But these brochures were designed to help non-compliant parcels and properties come into compliance. So it tells them, if you're a commercial property, you get your own. There's this unique brochure that tells them what standards are important to them. What kind of fixtures would be appropriate for a commercial site to come into compliance? Who do you contact for more information? And we've also produced one for residential. And then the residential one shows you what's the effects of not having compliant lighting. And you can see that picture on the right shows what a shielded fixture would do. You know, puts the light in the right spot. Whereas the misdirected light will do a wonderful job of eliminating your neighbor's house, but not really getting the light where it belongs and also contributes to skiglow and erosion of the dark sky condition. Who needs the dark skies? So this is some factoids to help residents understand the value, again, of dark skies. It's not only about astronomers and stargazing, but it's valuable for the military to have dark skies, and it helps them complete their missions. It's valuable for, you know, wildlife. It's good to have light where it belongs for crime and the environment. Animals and nocturnal animals are more resilient and sustained when the lighting is controlled properly. So these brochures provide a variety of different information to help residents, commercial users, and industrial users understand the value to becoming compliant with the outdoor lighting codes. There's been an extensive effort to update the outdoor lighting codes in Flagstaff and Coquenino County. And there's a brochure that's been prepared that is following along with that code, and it breaks it down. It says, "How do we make a technical code even more simple or available for understanding to even a greater audience than the code has been made?" So do your part. Keep the skies dark, you know, some catchy phrase to help people remember that. This brochure is available in PDF format. It can be printed, handed out, can be distributed through different stakeholder engagement opportunities or community events as per the education and outreach plan. Explains why we regulate lighting. What are the lighting zones? All the different terminology that comes with the outdoor lighting code. How do we use it? You know, graphics in that bottom left-hand corner, you see graphics showing the difference between like a 3,000 Kelvin light and a 6,000 Kelvin light. People don't really understand that unless they've really dove into it. This gives you a pictorial representation about why certain colors are important, why certain colors are chosen, what is most in compliant with the code. What does it mean to have something that's not in compliance with the code? So these brochures together are going to help the dark sky specialists achieve their goals with gaining compliance for the lighting. And then that in turn will help achieve sustainability for the military, for Camp Navajo, for naval observatories, as well as maintain that amazing dark sky that Flagstaff and Coquenino County is known for and the quality of life for their citizens. Lastly, there's one more way that the task is approaching how to demonstrate the value of dark skies, and that's through some demonstration projects. And the Matrix Project Team has been in communication with the dark sky specialists at the City of Flagstaff and Coquenino County to identify some real-world examples where we can show success in dark skies. So the intention is to show compliance success where lighting has been updated or construction-related successes, so where new constructions occurring, say additions or modifications to a site, and then those light fixtures, you know, have the before-and-after pictures to show those differences. We're intending to take those pictures and put them together on a poster board for display at City Hall and also, again, be available as a PDF, so available on the websites and also available for print and distribution. Another part of this is that we're partnering with local vendors to help them have the right fixtures for the purpose so that the replacement fixtures are compliant with the updated code for residential and commercial sites. So we've worked again with the dark sky consultants, sorry, your dark sky consultants, the specialists at the city and the county have been absolutely wonderful for this in identifying those vendors that are available, the right fixtures, as well as the sites that could be featured for that demonstration as well. So all of these components together are really going to, you know, really show you why this is one of those signature projects that is being looked at by OLDCC for these MIS grant projects. And I really, on behalf of Celeste and the project team, for allowing us to provide you this presentation and show you the wonderful project with the dark sky database. And we're more than happy for any comments or questions you might have.
Thank you, council supervisors. Any questions? Councilmember Rasmussen.
Thank you very much. Celeste, I'd like you to go back to your last slide, if you can, while I start talking. I really think your first name is very cool. I really think your name, your first name is very cool in terms of this topic. You know, I think, I think everyone knows here that I'm a huge proponent and fan of our dark skies and anything that we can do to protect them. Just mentioning that for our visitors here today, in case that wasn't known. I'm not the only one on council who is really advocating for a strong protection of dark skies. And as your brochures and your presentation, we'll make note, there's multiple reasons for that. Celeste, I wanted to ask you specifically about the economic impact study. Can you just briefly go into what goes into that a little bit more? I'm sure there's some stuff in there about jobs, but I want to make sure that that number, when that study comes out, is also touching upon dark sky tourism, just the tourism dollars that come into the state and to the region because we have such strong dark skies and not just, you know, some of those, some of the more intangible factors as well and not just the economic dollar signs.
Yes, sir. Thank you for bringing that up, and because a lot of people do not realize that a comprehensive economic impact study does include that. So the direct economic impact is inclusive from that data that I talked about from the military bases, and that is the personnel, their salaries. That's number one. The second part would be any income or economic impact, I would say, from the contractors to any consultants that they had. And there's been some definite military construction in the last couple of years, so that's, that's a positive. There's an impact from some other inclusive at the base level that are miniscule to us, but they have income as well that we try to collect at that level. The indirect is the inclusivity of what's the impact to the community, the restaurants, the dry cleaners, the grocery stores where everybody goes to, you know, work and play and to shop and entertain, entertainment and such. So there's, there's that economic impact as well from all of the different military personnel as well as any civilian personnel. So I didn't say that earlier, so it's both military and civilian personnel. The one thing that we do that a lot of other economists or that have done economic impacts for different defense communities is we go that extra step, and it's exactly what you stated, is we try to do that tertiary part, and we try to identify defense contractor, contractors outside of just the Naval Observatory and Camp Navajo but are located within your community. That's number one. Number two, the tourism component, and we use InPlan as far as our model. And then we also look at other industries that are connected to any type of services, products that are being sold to, to the installations for their missions that are utilized, that are required for their missions, I should say. So we try to do as comprehensive as, as possible. And we do interviews with some of the different stakeholders, inclusive of the economic development specialists as well. Ed, is there any other that you would like to add? I think that's pretty comprehensive.
Any other questions from council?
Yeah, I wasn't finished yet, if I may. So I, this is more of a comment and a thought. I'm not exactly sure who it's directed to, but just something to chew on for all of us. You know, as a candidate running for reelection right now, sometimes you have a hammer and everything's a nail. I'm definitely door knocking and canvassing right now, talking to people, leaving brochures and literature at doors to get the word out. I wonder if something, some sort of similar campaign would be useful and helpful in this case, something organized by the city and the county where teams go out, we leave this literature on doorsteps, we talk to residents, and we have those conversations to really cultivate why this is important and the diversity of why it's important. You know, I walk around my neighborhood and it's pretty dark, but there's just, there's, there's a lot of non-compliance, there's a lot of people not actively thinking about this, there's more string lighting going up in backyards that are fairly bright that sometimes stay on all night. I've been guilty of leaving porch lights on myself. I just don't think this conversation is saturating our neighborhoods very much, and given the importance of the Naval Observatory's mission, this is, this is a behavior pattern that we need to cultivate and we need to continuously revisit as new people come into Flagstaff. So just thinking out loud about how we, we organize an ongoing, long-term effort to talk to residents and to leave that literature and to go the extra step to like, show them what light to buy, because just the fact that people know they're non-compliant, but they don't know how to fix the problem the next time they're walking through the aisle at Home Depot, they're not going to address it. So anyway, just thinking out loud around that, and maybe we can develop a discipline around that.
Supervisor, you are our number one ambassador. I'm going to sign you up. That is one, thank you. That is one of the key actions that's in that playbook that we talked about as far as the educational campaign. And so that educational campaign is very comprehensive in that it develops educational tools of which many of them we have in the, that are the brochures, but it's also about how you have the community, our ambassadors, there's a lot of ambassadors out in the community, and we would go out to the different events and have tents. The city and the county staff would be part of it, but other key stakeholders would be ambassadors as well, and basically be the voice for the Naval Observatory as well as Camp Navajo. And Camp Navajo and the Observatory staff would also be partners with, with every, the other ambassadors out there and going to those events. And I believe there was a strategy in there to, to do neighborhood meetings, like coffee meetings, if you had coffee talks, and other different organizations like at the Kiwanis Clubs. So the key was to utilize all of the different community organizations that currently exist and events that currently exist and all of the stakeholders and utilize those as the ambassadors to get the word out, utilizing the tools that we developed and to continue to develop additional tools. So hopefully that helps.
Thank you, Celeste. Councilmember House.
Thank you. Tagging on to Councilmember Aslan's comments there and just chatting with Councilmember Shimoney, I think it has to be thrown out, have you thought about a video campaign for some of these features? But at the same time, I did want to, to just ask, when it comes to the, the information that you showed with the data available through the parcel reporting application and the non-conforming lighting database, is that, I'm assuming that it's not publicly accessible, but is that correct or is it accessible to the public?
The items are not available to the public right now. They're a management tool for enforcement. So a lot of that data, you probably wouldn't want to have just wide open to the public as it is. However, that's something that the GIS teams at Coconino County and Flagstaff could explore to see if there's a tool they want to create that would whittle down and only provide certain types of information. That might be a possibility, but in general with enforcement information, typically don't share that with the public wide open.
Yeah, thank you. I wasn't sure how extensive the information was, obviously because I can't access it, but I do think it would be a really cool tool to have for, for folks to have a better understanding of the, the impact if they're looking at their, their property in something like this or their business facility, anything like that, to be able to see in that same sort of visual format what that impact is and, and how the, the lighting spreads or any of that information. I think having that sort of visual is really impactful and meaningful.
Yeah, Councilmember Shimoney.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you all for your, your presentation and all the hard work that has gone into this. This is incredible. There's a lot packed into this agenda item, and it just shows when the county and the city work together, what we can do with, with, with little effort from, from our perspective as elected. So cheers to all of us and Councilmember Aslan, thank you for your champion and advocacy for this. This is a big deal. And no, I know this means a lot to you, and you have been a massive advocate for dark skies in our community, so I appreciate you carrying that, that light correct torch. That's not adding too much. Anyways, I'm going to echo Councilmember House who spoke about videos and say thank you for being, championing that voice and hope that you all carry that, that message on with the work. Thank you. I don't really have any questions or comments, just appreciate all of your efforts. And, and I do need to get going, so I'm going to be tuning in virtually, but I, but I am leaving the dais soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Supervisor. Sure.
Yes, thank you, and thanks very much for the presentation. Very informative and obviously very important for Coconino County and here in Flagstaff. And I do want to talk about Councilmember Aslan's comments. I think that the Dark Sky Coalition here in Flagstaff, which has been such an incredible educational tool for Flagstaff and obviously across Coconino County, and you know, also the star parties, which are just, are more and more and more people in attendance on these star parties to really show the importance of maintaining our dark skies, and it really is just education. And, and I think it's important that we continue our joint education efforts, whether it be at the, the county fair, whether it be in First Friday events, or whether it be during STEM events. And, you know, videos are always great. We know that Councilmember Shimoney and, and sometimes just, you know, showing the proper lighting, et cetera, it is really just education. So, and this is absolutely an example where the city and county, working in partnership together, can really, really benefit the community in so many areas, but this is one where it has been a great success. So thank you for the city. And I want to mention one thing, and he's not here because he's on a trip with his family, but Supervisor Matt Ryan, this has been, in working with the Matrix team, et cetera, this has been his, just so much of his passion, and he has been working for years on maintaining and preserving the viability for Camp Navajo, but also for the Naval Observatory. So I want to mention that he's not here, and he has really carried the county forward and has really educated me, and I know many other members of the Board of Supervisors. So thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to have to recognize this current council who made sure, of course, upon my prodding as well, that we have iterated the environmental stewardship as part of our legislative priorities at the state and federal levels, and we have identified dark skies in addition to the protection and preservation of our natural areas, trails, and as well as our park system. I do want to take this moment and extend gratitude to our consultants and to the county and, and the city team. I am in awe of these brochures that were sent to us, and it's, so this is prepared by Matrix and county and the city. So it's a brochure about information and creating awareness for dark skies, residential properties, and dark sky commercial and industry properties. Actually, I'll talk about a little bit of, of the value of dark skies in terms of economic impact. I'm just curious though, I know this is a military installation sustainability grant, I'm just, I'm curious to know why Naval Observatory is not identified as one of the community partners here as well as the NAU, NAU, I mean, they have a rich astronomy program as well. Also, shout out to our Discover Flagstaff, they're making a mindful effort in promoting Kind of like, take your blankie to a star party and stay another night in Flagstaff or in Coconino County kind of messaging, but also this is in response to, of course, outdoor, outdoor, outdoor experience and the dark skies. So thank you to our entire team, and I'd love to share this, this flyer, so we do have some information that we can share to, to residents and business, which leads me to the next question, and this is probably a question to staff in terms of compliance. So this is great information, however, I would appreciate if there's any resources specific for, for residential, commercial, is where could they find the, they want to replace a light bulb, where could they find those, those information, the tools to, to be compliant, be, I think that the word is, is compliance a term? We were talking about code compliance the other day. So, so if we could also provide a link or a list of information where residents and small business owners could access those tools and resources so they could be compliant? Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Janice Hockla. I'm the Dark Sky Compliance Specialist. I would, I think right now I'm the main resource for that, so right now it is just...
You're a one-woman team.
Yeah, right now. Hopefully, you know, we grow. But yeah, so if they have any general questions, they would call me and we would kind of work together to kind of build that lighting design for both residential homes and commercial new builds. So that's where we're at right now. I think the brochures, when they go live, I think will be a useful tool. We can distribute that, you know, by the masses, and then ideally that'll lead to more conversations with me. So.
Thank you, Janice.
Yeah.
Mayor, if I may, just one more out loud thought to keep in mind, and I'm sorry if this is in there somewhere, but you know, we give out a lot of swag during our water challenge and during other events. I wonder if the appropriate type of light bulb that people should be having on their front porch is something that we could purchase en masse through various grants or other funding opportunities to hand out at events and to give away as, you know, swag and promotional materials. Just thinking out loud about that, throw it out there. If people actually have the right light bulb to go home with, I'm sure they'll plug it in, in their socket outside, especially if there's a little conversation that goes along with it.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan. Anything else? Well, thank you, Celeste and Ed, for the presentation. Really interesting work.
Thank you.
With that, we are down to agenda item eight, county and city ballot measures.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, as well as County Board of Supervisors. My name is Shannon Anderson. I am one of the city's deputy managers. Tonight, we have two presentations for you. The first is the Dale District Sales Tax, and that will be led by Sheriff Driscoll and Corey Ringenberg. Then I will follow them with a presentation on propositions 441 and 442. So I'm going to stop sharing my, my video so that I can share my screen.
Thank you, Shannon. Thank you, Shannon.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council, and Madam Chair and Board. We're here to talk about the jail tax tonight, and I'm going to introduce Cory Ringenberg, also with the county manager's office, to kind of kick things off.
Thank you, Mayor. Chair Horstman, thank you for the opportunity to present. This year, Proposition 445 is brought to you by the Coconino County Jail District. The jail district is asking voters, shall the Coconino, sorry, shall the Coconino County Jail District Board of Directors be authorized to extend the term of the existing Coconino County Jail District excise tax, a sales tax, of one half cent by a term of 25 years? Next slide, please. To give you a brief history of the Coconino County Jail District, in the 70s, 80s, and 90s, the city of Flagstaff in Coconino County experienced an exponential growth in population, and our jails felt that same growth. So, leading into the early 90s, we had significant overcrowding and overpopulation within our criminal justice system. In 1996, the Coconino County Board of Supervisors brought this issue to a citizens panel, where they were to evaluate the jail population and overcrowding issues. And they brought forth to the board a resolution idea of forming a jail district, and including a half-cent sales tax to fund the future needs of the jail district. At that time, and due to the economy, three tenths of a cent jail district sales tax was placed on that ballot. In 1997, Coconino County voters approved the formation of the Coconino County Jail District, as well as the three tenths of a cent jail tax, by a small margin. We fast forward later on to 96, in the, or 2006. At that time, we started to see an economic downturn in our community. As an excise tax, that money is generated through the sale of goods and services, like any other sales tax. And we started seeing that if these projections were to continue, that three tenths of a cent was not enough to maintain the stability of the jail district. In 2006, an initiative was placed on the ballot, asking voters to increase that three tenths of a cent to one half of a cent. So that's the point 005. And we have maintained that half-cent sales tax since 2007, when it was approved by voters by over 60%, growing in popularity and growing in understanding. Since that, this new request is an extension of the existing half-a-cent sales tax for a term of 25 years, which would extend the current tax for a term of 25 years to December 31 of 2051. Again, this is a jail district sales tax, taxing both residents and non-residents, visitors of our community. During the Blue Ribbon Committee meetings, they evaluated the need for a tax, and determined if it were a property tax, it would tax only our residents, and it would be affecting them more significantly. This jail tax actually displaces that burden to residents and non-residents alone. And we'd like to share, Sheriff, some of the successes of the jail district sales tax. Next slide, please.
The need for that tax, I think, is, is very evident. Populations in jails throughout the country in the last century kept going up and up. We weren't able to keep up with the, with the jail population. We were under a consent decree because of a lawsuit that was filed in the late 1970s. The more and more people were being arrested and held longer and longer in our jails. And so with this growth, that need to establish a better way for funding, as well as being able to manage a jail, was certainly evident. The budget shortfalls as well. The cost of keeping people in jail is very high, and I'll talk more about some of those costs later on. Next slide. The inmate programs that I'll talk a lot about here tonight are certainly what we're trying to do. The idea of, of arresting people and throwing away the key was what was done in the 1970s, 80s, even, even into the 90s. We didn't see the value in helping people when they were in jail. So, as Cory talked about, the formation of the jail district. We also looked at what we could do to reduce that revolving door that we have in our jails. How do we finally get the right size of a jail? Prior to this, we had inmate, we were capped at 165 inmates in our jail downtown, the old one. And we had 300 inmates in custody, so we farmed them out to other jails throughout the, the state, and paid millions of dollars a year to transport and house those other inmates. So the, the construction of, of the jail that was, was completed in 2000, allowed us to have a jail where we could keep our inmates that were arrested here in this community. But we also, at the same time, saw that need to start establishing programs for people to reduce this revolving door, in and out every week, or every month. And this idea of reducing recidivism was born. And, and we were one of the first in Arizona to implement some of these programs that I'm going to talk about here in a few minutes. So we finished the jail, the, the Flagstaff Jail, the new one, in the, in 2000. And the next year, we completed the Page Jail, 130 miles away. We needed another short-term holding facility up there. So we have a 48-bed jail up in the Page community. Next slide, please. The Exodus Program, and I think many of you have heard of it, is, is kind of our flagship program in the jail. But we also do other things besides just substance abuse, in custody, drug and alcohol treatment. We also try to provide a leg up, or an opportunity for people to turn their lives around through education, through training, through job skills, through reconnection with family. Something that we've learned early on was, when a person's put in jail, they need to maintain contact with their family or friends on the outside. And having the ability to visit, having that ability to interact with their families was vital to their success, once they got back out of the community. 95% of the people who are booked into our jail are coming back into the community. 95%. That other 5% go to other jurisdictions, or go to the Department of Corrections for, for long, longer-term sentences. So 95% of those people come in, come back to our communities and live with us. So why not take advantage of that time, as a captive audience, literally, to provide what programming we can to help them turn their lives around? So we provide educational and religious support, too. We have a lot of volunteers that come into our jail and provide ministerial and spiritual services to our inmates. But we also look at the cultural needs. I think there, there is a large Native American population in our county, and we have a large number of Native Americans that are housed in our, in our jail right now. So we've established a Hogan. We have a, on campus, we have a Hogan that was constructed out in the Cameron area, and then brought down to Flagstaff, and reconstructed here in Flagstaff. We have cultural services, spiritual services that are provided in that Hogan. We have a baptismal in there, a, a full immersion baptism. We have sweat lodges for both males and females, so people can stay in touch with their cultural needs through a sweat lodge. We've also have life skills training. You know, many of the people in our, in our jails don't read well. Many of the people don't understand things. Many of the people don't, aren't able to hold jobs. So we teach people how to read. We teach people how to parent their children. We teach people anger management. We teach people how to better their lives, and maybe balance a checkbook, skills they didn't have when they came in. So when, when they do leave, they have a better opportunity, again, to turn their lives around, avoid recidivism, and contribute back into their community. Next slide, please. The Exodus Program, the one thing that, that we've done, I think, over these years that has probably gotten the most, I guess, notoriety and success, but it's to reduce recidivism, is reduce that dependence on drug and alcohol that, that so many people in jails seem to have. 90-day program, one program for men, one program for women. It's been very, very effective since it was established in 2007, to reduce recidivism, and again, provide those educational services. Some data about it, though. Nationally, 70% of the people who are put into jail return within a year. That's recidivism. That's high recidivism. 70%. But those that go through a program such as Exodus, that rate drops to 30%. And that's what our Exodus program has. 25 to 30% of, of the people come back. That's really, really successful. And other areas around the country that, that have those in custody, drug and alcohol treatment programs, have a similar success statistic of 25 to 30%. So that, that, that success is so meaningful. So as we look at other potential things in the future, we will always be looking at programs that will help us reduce recidivism. Because I, I will tell you, as, as the, the one responsible for the Coconino County Jail, I don't want to fill it up. I want to have as few a people in our jail as humanly possible. So I'm an advocate of programming in, in our jail, to reduce that population, and get those people out and productive back in the community again. Next slide, please. Fewer people returning to jail is the absolute goal. And I, I just gave you the statistics associated with this, but we have had people who have contacted the courts, who were due to get out of jail, and asked the judge to keep them in jail until they finish the program. We have phone calls that come in from people from around the state, asking if they can put their son or daughter in our program to go through Exodus, because they don't have anything like that in their community. Well, we can't put people in our jail that haven't been arrested, so we have to turn them down. But those are the kinds of successes and stories that we have about our Exodus program. Again, extremely proud of it, and very successful is these go. Next slide, please. I talked earlier about some of the things we provide, but a sweat lodge, that connection with people's culture is so important. We have religious services, almost any religion that you can imagine. We will have people come in if they desire, if an inmate desires that, and provide that religious connection with people. Again, keeping that, that, that cultural tie that makes, that makes them successful, and gives them hope when they do get out. Talking circles, they're part, very much a part of our Exodus program, as well as other programs. Giving job skills, talking about things that they need to do when they get out of jail. And the different worship services. Again, we, Sundays, we have that opportunity for, for people as well. Next slide, please. With the continuation of the programs, those, those life skills that we talk about, because so many of the people that are in jail lack the life skills to be successful. And I, I talked about anger management, I talked about literacy, but just teaching people basic things, basic knowledge is what so many of them need. And so we focus our programs with doing that. In the past, we, we've done programs where we've given people a tool belt, because they were working in construction, and they were a work release program. They worked during the day, and then would come into jail at night to serve their sentence. But we gave them the tool belt to go on out and work in that construction field, giving people that leg up, instead of just kicking them out the door and expecting them to be successful. Next slide, please.
Go ahead. So, without a jail district sales tax, what will we be looking at? We can guarantee that without the jail district sales tax, the Coconino County would have to tap their general fund, and make significant contributions to operate the jail. We can also guarantee that municipalities and townships who book inmates into the Coconino County Jail may be charged for those bookings, and that cost would be displaced to those booking agencies. We also can anticipate that the program's success of Exodus and other in custody programs, those would be the first thing that we'd have to give up as non-mandatory services within the jail. And we could contribute that to increases in recidivism. So right now, the Coconino County Jail District contributes approximately $22 million a year to operate the jail. That's 86% of the general operation. The Coconino County Maintenance of Effort contributes 12%. And the Sheriff's Office continues to rent bed rentals to federal inmates and other agencies, contributing approximately 2% of the overall expenses. So $22 million from the Coconino County Jail District would be displaced to other agencies throughout northern Arizona to utilize the facilities. Programs such as Exodus and in custody substance abuse treatment, other life skills training, those would likely be negatively impacted. Next slide, please. So with that, are there any questions related to the jail district sales tax, and how it affects Flagstaff?
Any questions from council or supervisors? Councilmember McCarthy.
So the proposal is a half cent? That's an incomplete thought. Is that a half cent per dollar?
It's, it's, well, 50 cents on a $100 purchase, if that helps. But it's a, a-
Okay.
Half cent. And by the way, the half cent is the maximum allowed by law. So we wouldn't be coming back in the future asking to raise it. A half cent is, is really right at the maximum.
So it's 50 cents per $100?
Yes. That's correct.
All right. I'm not seeing any further questions.
Just reflect on the comment.
Yes.
Thank you. And thanks very much for the presentation. And, and I know Sheriff and Cory, you two have been very involved in this, and getting the word out in education in our community, and thank you for that. And, you know, a couple of things to think about this. If, for some reason, the jail sales tax does not continue, and it really does then fall to the general fund, both Coconino County and the city of Flagstaff, based on, quite frankly, detention use, what that's going to probably mean is some of these programs, because it's, you know, think of the bite it's going to take out of the general fund for both the city of Flagstaff and Coconino County. And unfortunately, when money gets tight, what happens, our programs are diminished. And I would really hate to see, well, that's going in the wrong direction for our community. We need to do, do more for all of our residents, and that means our incarcerated residents. There's still residents of Flagstaff. There's still residents of Coconino County. And, you know, the Exodus Program, life skill programs, these additional programs that, that Coconino County Jail had, or Coconino County Jail has over the years developed, is really an important part of our community. So I'm really hopeful that we can get the word out to members of our community. And I want to say one other thing, that I would like to see these programs expanded. In Coconino County Jail, we were able to get the pathways, program, grant monies, was it 3 million?
2.5 million.
I, I always round up. 2.5, $2.5 million. Now, I understand that's a post-incarceration reentry, but I would love to see something like that, with the proper funding and grants, of course, expanded, so that we can even provide even greater benefits, especially for behavioral and mental health within Coconino County Jail. So, you know, I don't want to see this go backwards. I think we owe all of our residents a standard and basics, and that includes our incarcerated residents. So hopefully, we can get the word out for Proposition 445. I think it's important to get this passed. So thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman. All right. Councilmember Solis, I'm going to go to Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Madam, Madam Chair. Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Mr. Ringenberg. Oh, I'm glad I got that one. I think it's important when it comes to messaging to, to our, our residents and voters, that this is not a new sales tax. This is a continuation. And, and then if you, you mentioned Sheriff, that it's, it's 50 cents for a $100 beer, but it's sales tax. If I pay $10 for- If I pay ten dollars for coffee, so it's five cents of my coffee would go to this jail district sales tax. Thank you. And I would also kind of provide this space of gratitude for the pathways. And one of the many hats I wear is on the Coquenino County, Arizona At Work, Coquenino County Workforce Board and job training for re-entry and providing that basic job training skills for our inmates, so if they can be ready and be employable after incarceration is a big step. So wearing my Arizona At Work, Coquenino Workforce Board, I could speak for our board about strengthening that program as well. Thank you.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Ms. Solis just talked about messaging. She brought up, this is not a new tax. That's important. I think the strongest point you made through this whole presentation is that the recidivation rate is gone from like seventy percent down to thirty percent. That's got to be the main point in the message, because, I mean, I'm very supportive of this, and that's probably the biggest reason right there.
Councilman, I agree. The Exodus program has turned so many things around, so many people around, and the popularity beyond our own county is important. But like the chairman just said, too, what other programs? Well, I always want to pursue other programs as well as other grants, because there's other things to do as well. We just can't rest on our laurels. I think we're always going to be pursuing, what can we do to reduce recidivism, and what can we do to help these people, you know, get that leg up when they do get out of jail?
Councilmember Aslan, and then we have Councilmember Shmoni online.
It's just a great segue into what I was going to point out, just to put a finer point on Councilmember Solis's comment. You know, this is about recidivism, but I think in terms of messaging, it also saves money in the long run. It's just financially smart to do this. It's good house, it's good financial housekeeping. The money that we spend to fully fund all of these things is going to save us money on the other end, for sure. And the other point I wanted to make, and perhaps this is a little bit outside of the scope of our conversation, but if these programs are so highly sought after and so successful within our jails, there should definitely be efforts to extend the programming to outside of our jail walls for those who are asking for the help before they end up in your jurisdiction. So, you know, and there's many ways, of course, to do that. United Way, all sorts of other program we can do at the county and the city level. But I just wanted to bring that up and point that out, so that we keep that in mind.
Councilman, that Pathways Program is designed exactly that way. It's grant funds, so it's not focused on in custody, but we have all these services right adjacent to the jail. Mental health services, transportation, attorney services, both prosecution and defense. If somebody needs help, they're assessed when they come into jail, so when they get out, they're walked right in to this service area outside the jail and hooked up with whatever services they could avail themselves or their assessment said they needed. So again, it's outside the jail, and there's no delay. I think what's happened in the past is somebody would get out of jail and they would be given a card with information that you have an appointment with a housing counselor in two weeks. Well, they ended up going right back to what the people that got them in trouble in the locations and never made those appointments. Now, it's immediate. Before they're, right as they're released from custody, they walk into the store, and all these things are in the store for them.
And just a quick shout out to our CARES team, and I'm sure there are ways that those dots are being connected as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I was struggling with the U button. Thank you, Sheriff, and thank you, Cory, for the presentation and your work in our community. I so appreciate it, as you know. I just wanted to make a comment about throughout COVID, how our numbers in our community decreased in terms of, I believe it was arrests and other criminal offenses that would sometimes result in bringing folks to the jail. And I remember Ross from the shelter making the point that it was because of all the housing efforts that were being done with our hotels. So just trying to, just add that point to the great work that you're doing, Sheriff. Housing, I think, is really another big, big barrier here that could really help people in terms of recidivism. And so, not sure, Sheriff, if you have anything to add on the topic of housing?
No, I just think that housing has been identified as one of the contributors to, you know, criminal behavior or lack of housing. And whatever, I think, what we can do for housing will certainly help. And the other part is mental illness or mental health certainly plays a part in this as well.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. And just wanted to give you a shout out for your great programs with Exodus, and I've really enjoyed attending the recovery court graduations. And I hear that Mayor and Vice Mayor have been attending, and I know that C. Andrew Clifton has been a regular attendant as well. So great, great to see the great work, and definitely glad to see the new programs with Pathways beginning. Really appreciate hearing about the cultural sensitivities and anything we can do to address the over-representation of Indigenous people in the jail goes a long way to me and I know it's for our community. So thank you for that cultural sensitive, sensitivity approach to your work. And that's all I had. Thank you, and looking forward to seeing this getting passed on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shmoni. Supervisor Askus?
Yes, thank you. First off, I'd like to say thank you, Sheriff, for your leadership. These programs are innovative and making a big impact in our community, the Exodus Program, and looking forward to the Pathways Program. I just wanted to make a comment about how important this jail tax is. If the ramifications of not passing this tax would really cause us as supervisors to have to make some serious budget decisions if we had to provide these services that are state mandated without this tax. And so I really hope the community realizes the importance of this tax and continues it. I did have one question, though. Since during COVID, a lot of the programs that were in-house with church services and cultural programs were shut down because of ratio of folks and just the dangers of COVID, where are those programs now? Have they been fully implemented? Are they, how are they, where are we at with those programs?
Supervisor, I think we're very close to resurrecting them. We are still quarantining people that come into jail for five days. We're almost at the end of that period where, and this was all CDC recommendations for jails. So we're very close to eliminating that, and then we can resurrect all the programs. And I want, I wish we'd have done this six months ago, but we weren't able to. We haven't had COVID, a COVID case in our jail in about a month and a half. So we're, we're close.
That's great news to hear. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Sheriff. Supervisor Breguet?
Yes, Madam Chair and Mayor DZ, I just want to say that, you know, a lot of these programs and a lot of, or a lot of these things affect the people that we, that are constituents, you know, we're really not in the prevention mode. And I think that's the reason why we're, you know, going where to getting people, getting to jail, and then that's where we finally, you know, do something. And it's just like the health programs, the health, the area is also like diabetes, you don't know until you're like at a certain stage. And then how do we work with the hospital? That's just an example, you know, to have a stick, you know, maybe every year or something and tell us, you know, that, you know, you're just on the verge of, you know, getting prediabetic or something. And then cancer, you know, we're losing a lot of people at stage four, and that's when they find out that they actually have it. And people that are alcoholics the same way again. So I'm just kind of thinking, you know, where is this whole prevention mode going to be at at some point in time? But we're doing everything else after, you know, they go into jail, and those are good programs, and everything that's been, that we're doing is, we're trying to help them. And so I always think about those things, you know, the prevention portion of how do we do that? You know, how far do we go back? Who do we work with, you know, to get those started? So I want to say thank the staff, Coquenino County, and also the city. Thank you very much, and my colleagues, and, you know, the council here and here, and so forth, allowing us to be here tonight, you know, and listen to each other's. And this is what's really needed, and be, be able to sit down and talk about issues and how, where we can help. And certainly this jail tax thing, we all have to work together, you know, to see and get our, you know, communication going and making sure that, you know, that our constituents are aware of what it really is and how important it is, you know, to have this, the sales tax passed. So I just want to say thank you again.
Thank you, Supervisor Breguet. All right, with that, thank you, Cory, thank you, Sheriff, and we'll move along to the other propositions.
Yes, thank you.
So Mayor, Council, Board, and Supervisors, I will now share the presentation on Proposition 441 and 442.
Thank you for joining us today to learn more about general obligations bonds and propositions 441 and 442. We are here today to provide information about general obligation bonds, Proposition 441 for wildfire, flood, and wastewater infrastructure, and Proposition 442 for rental and home ownership opportunities. Some may be wondering how we selected the two bond measures. It began with city council reviewing a list of unfunded capital needs in April of 2021, where they narrowed it down to three measures: infrastructure, climate action, and housing. They referred these three measures to a citizen bond committee for further consideration and a recommendation. The citizen bond committee was made up of seventeen community members. They came together between November of 2021 through May of 2022 to learn more about each project, review community input, and make a recommendation. The citizen bond committee's recommendation was presented to city council on June 7th, and council adopted two bond measures for infrastructure and housing. The infrastructure bond measure is an investment in wildfire suppression, stormwater flood mitigation, and wastewater treatment, while the housing bond measure will create rental and home ownership opportunities for Flagstaff residents. You will hear more details about these measures following the information about general obligation What are general obligation bonds? A general obligation bond, also known as a GO bond, is a method of debt financing available used by cities to fund large projects. In order to use GO bond financing, first, the council must decide to add a ballot measure to a general election for voters to consider. Then, the voters must approve the ballot measure to allow the city to utilize GO bond financing for those specific items in the measure. GO bonds authorization allows the city to pledge secondary property taxes for repayment of debt that is issued. What is a secondary property tax? A secondary property tax is a levy assessed to property owners. That levy is part of the annual property tax bill provided by the county. Cities can only assess a secondary property levy if the voters approve a ballot measure. The annual levy can only be assessed for the amounts expected to be paid on principal, interest, and fees related to the GO bond debt. Since 2010, voters approved five GO bond ballot measures for over $57 million. In 2010, voters approved the upgrades to the public safety communication system that were completed in 2012, and various street and utility improvements completed between 2011 and 2015. In 2012, voters approved funding for the forest health and water supply protection for our community. The project was able to bring in nearly $38 million in federal and state funds. Voters also approved funding to help guide a new core maintenance facility. With an additional $15 million in other funding sources, the facility was completed in 2018. In 2016, voters approved funding for a new municipal courthouse. With an additional $7 million in funding, the courthouse was completed in 2020. There is a state legal limit for how much GO bonds a city can have outstanding. The state limitations are based on a 20% and 6% limitation that is calculated off of assessed valuations of properties in taxing area. The City of Flagstaff taxing area has over $280 million in capacity to issue GO bonds, and only if the voters approve that level. The City of Flagstaff has a policy to maintain a secondary property tax based on prior ballot measures that voters approved and the commitment made by the city to keep rates at or below what was presented. Recent ballot measures expected the rate to be at or below a rate of 0.8366. Due to paying off of debt over the last few years, the city was required to reduce the rate to 0.8000 and is based on existing GO bond obligations. Council provided direction to maintain the current rate with the upcoming ballot measures. If either ballot measures are approved, we intend to maintain at or below this rate in future years. The ballot measures being considered equal $77 million of the $100 million capacity to maintain the rate over the next 20 years. In the city district, there are several property classifications. One of the most common classifications is related to owner-occupied residential properties. This slide shows the estimated secondary property tax levy impact for this classification. For a property with a county assessor's valuation at $250,000, it is estimated that the property owner will pay an average of $140.05 per year for the 20-year GO debt for a total of The table provides an example of how the allocation of the tax levy compared to the two propositions the voters will decide on. Another common classification is related to commercial properties. This slide shows the estimated secondary property tax levy impact for this classification. For a commercial property with a county assessor valuation at $1 million, it is estimated that the property owner will pay an average of $899.73 per year for the 20-year GO debt for a total of $17,994.67. This table provides an example of how the allocation of the tax levy compared to the two propositions the voters will decide on. The city intends on maintaining a secondary property tax at or below 0.8000 during the 20-year period of our GO bond debt, should the voter approve one or both of the propositions. The city is able to do this because as existing debt gets paid off, it creates capacity to issue new debt, allowing the city to direct that portion of the rate to the new GO bonds. The city has been successful in maintaining rates below what was shared in previous publicity pamphlet in 2004 GO bond elections. Proposition 441 is investing in City of Flagstaff wildfire suppression, stormwater flood mitigation, and wastewater treatment infrastructure. The bond question is, shall the City of Flagstaff be authorized to issue and sell general obligation bonds in a principal amount up to $57,285,000 for the purpose of replacing wildfire suppression engines and water tankers, increasing capacity of floodwaters within spruce wash, increasing wastewater treatment capacity at wastewater treatment facilities, and implementing energy efficiency upgrades at wastewater treatment facilities. Wildland fire is a great to the City of Flagstaff. As climate continues to change, the community has experienced wildland fires in greater size, frequency, and impacts, such as the museum, tunnel, and pipeline fires. Pictured here are two types of specialized wildland fire equipment that the bond would replace. Specialized fire apparatus is required to protect Flagstaff from the threat of wildland fire extending into neighborhoods and infrastructure. Flagstaff's current fleet of wildland fire apparatus are experiencing significant downtimes of up to 35% due to breakdown. This reduces the ability to effectively respond. of up to 35% due to breakdown. This reduces the ability to effectively respond. A delay in response to wildland fires allows the increased fire growth and subsequent impacts to public and firefighter safety. Proposition 441 would fund $2,185,000 to replaced aged wildland fire apparatus that were built between 1997 and 2001. The replacement apparatus will provide reliable, safer, and more advanced equipment to protect Flagstaff from wildland fire and its devastating impacts. The 2019 museum fire burned the Spruce Wash watershed on the flanks of the Dry Lake Hills and Mount Eldon, drastically altering the soil conditions and vegetation cover. It will take many years for the landscape to heal. Climate change, with its periodic extreme weather events, lead to flooding that exceeds the existing drainage capacity. Subsequent monsoon rains scoured out the drainage, moving debris, ash, and mud through Flagstaff neighborhoods. This creates both an environmental and public health risk in addition to private property and public infrastructure damage. The Spruce Channel Master Plan is still under development and will guide improvements along the wash. Alluvial fans constructed on forest land slow down flows and disperse sediment before stormwater enters the wash through Flagstaff neighborhoods. A series of linked projects are needed to alleviate flooding throughout the wash. Much work has been done, but more work is needed to add capacity through the channel net road crossings. Channel capacity will be increased to handle near three times the original design flows. So far, the current mitigation measures have kept the neighborhoods from flooding during 2022 summer monsoon season. Work will continue over the next few years to manage this new flow demand. Over the past 30 years, Flagstaff's population has nearly doubled, while the wastewater treatment plants have operated with the same equipment at the same capacity. It's time to meet current demands and poised the city toward future advancements in efficiency and wastewater treatment. Flagstaff has two water reclamation plants. The Rio de Flag plant has a liquids capacity of 4 million gallons per day, with the Wildcat Hill reclamation plant treating up to 6 million gallons per day of liquids. Wildcat Hill handles all of the solids treatment for the city. We need additional digesters which process solids handling. Digestors take wastewater solids and convert them to the methane gas, water, and carbon through a biological process known as anaerobic digestion. The primary wastewater pump station moves wastewater through the treatment process. Storm events and other factors can vary flows significantly. The pump station will be reconfigured with different sized pumps that can combine in tandem to maximize efficiency and ensure the treatment process manages the flows occurring at the time. We'll add two cogeneration units that use methane, a byproduct of the digester process, and convert it into electricity. This electricity can provide heat or emergency backup power. Water reclamation takes a lot of energy, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Backup emergency power in case of electrical grid outages provides resiliency to climate change and keep the plants running when fire, weather, or power outages occur. The Rio plant will add a smaller set of turbo blowers in the needed combination with the existing larger blowers to provide the right amount of aeration for the anaerobic digestion process. Effectively managing the wastewater treatment process is good for the community and the environment. Water is a precious resource. Keeping it clean and responsibly handling waste products benefits residents, the landscape, and our underground aquifers. Energy efficiency projects save money and poised the utility toward future advanced treatment processes. Proposition 442 is titled Creating Rental and Home Ownership Opportunities for Residents of Flagstaff. The bond question is, shall the City of Flagstaff be authorized to issue and sell general obligation bonds in a principal amount up to $20 million for the purpose of redeveloping city-owned housing to create additional affordable rental units, repurposing existing available buildings into rental units, incentivizing the private sector to incorporate affordable rental housing into new developments, and expanding the homebuyer assistance program? Housing affordability is often a topic of conversation in the community, but what does it mean? As defined by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, housing affordability is when a household spends no more than 30% of their pre-tax income on housing and housing-related expenses. Many Flagstaff residents are surprised to learn that 65% of all Flagstaff households are low to moderate income. On the next slide, you will see how these numbers impact our community. When a household spends more than 30% of its gross income on housing and housing-related expenses, by definition, they are housing cost burdened. As you can see in the graphic on the left, 45% of all households in Flagstaff are housing cost burdened, with 57% of renters and 27% of homeowners experiencing this condition. The graphic on the right gives a snapshot of housing prices and income over the last 10 years. During this timeframe, the median sales price of a home in Flagstaff has increased by 166% to $615,000, and rent for a two-bedroom apartment has increased at least 66%, while the area median income increased by only 36.5%. This disconnect between housing prices and income directly relates to 45% of Flagstaff households being housing cost burdened and needing some form of assistance to achieve housing affordability in both rental and home ownership. Having a variety of rental and home ownership opportunities in a community is connected to positive effects in health, education, economic development, environmental outcomes, and jobs. Proposition 442 is expected to provide a path forward to increase housing affordability for broader community demographics in Flagstaff. As mentioned earlier, there are four efforts in Proposition 442 to create additional rental and home ownership opportunities for residents of Flagstaff. Listed first is redeveloping city-owned housing to create additional affordable rental units. The City of Flagstaff owns and operates 265 units of low-income public housing and the land underneath the units. There is a current opportunity to redevelop these housing sites to increase the number of rental units on the same land. The approximately $5 million will be leveraged in partnership with the private sector and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. When complete, the redevelopment is expected to result in a minimum of 530 rental units, more than double of what exists now. The new units are likely to serve various income groups, including above the low-income defined groups, and will not be part of the public housing program under the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. It is important to note that no current residents of public housing will be permanently displaced. The second effort specified in Proposition 442 is repurposing existing available buildings into rental units. Funding in this area will allow the City of Flagstaff to partner with private developers, nonprofits included, to repurpose existing and available buildings and spaces into rental opportunities for the residents of Flagstaff. Housing units are not the only community benefit this activity will provide. In addition to the creation of an estimated 75 rental units, currently vacant space in Flagstaff will transition to occupied homes. The third effort specified in Proposition 442 is incentivizing the private sector to incorporate affordable rental housing in new developments. Funding will be utilized to incentivize private developers, including nonprofits, to incorporate affordable rental units and market rate developments. This investment is anticipated to create an estimated 400 to 500 new rental units affordable to the residents of Flagstaff, in addition to the market rate units in the new developments. The last effort specified in Proposition 442 is expanding the homebuyer assistance program. Funding in this area will expand the current City of Flagstaff Home Ownership Assistance Program, which provides eligible first-time Flagstaff homebuyers with down payment and closing cost assistance for the purchase of a home within the city limits. The current funding is limited, not guaranteed on an annual basis, and benefit is limited to around 10 households a year. The assistance is provided in the form of a repayable loan that, when repaid, will be utilized again to help additional Flagstaff households. Approximately 305 households will be assisted with the initial funds. As the funds are repaid and utilized again and again, it is expected that the benefit will continue to assist future homebuyers. Proposition 442 will benefit Flagstaff by creating additional rental and ownership opportunities to support Flagstaff residents who want to continue to call Flagstaff their home. Local funding means local rules can be established. Local funding has the ability to assist households not eligible for traditional housing programs, as most programs use federal or state funding that limits who can be assisted to low-income households. While oversight and expenditure of bond funds to ensure community benefit ultimately rests with City Council, the 13-member Housing Commission will provide oversight and recommendations to City Council regarding the use of bond funds. An annual report will be published to keep the public informed on the use of bond funds, and the programs will also be monitored annually as part of the city's existing budget process, which requires a public hearing and annual City Council approval. For more information about general obligation bonds and propositions 441 and 442, visit www dot Flagstaff Bonds 2022 dot com, or you can use the QR code displayed in the bottom right-hand corner of the screen. Thank you for your time and attention today.
Thank you Shannon. I assume that's the end of the presentation and said thank you. So if we have... Excellent. Well, if we have any questions, comments, open up the floor.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that very complete presentation, and that definitely needs to get out. So thank you so much for that. I do have a question on 441. Is the stormwater flood mitigation primary, is it limited to the Spruce Wash and the museum fire?
Board of Supervisor Chairman Horstman, yes, the Spruce Wash is the flood mitigation that's included in Proposition 441.
Thank you. And then just a comment on 442. I think we all, here in Coquigny County, in the City of Flagstaff, affordable housing, workforce housing is certainly a number-one priority, and it's limiting our economic development. It's, it's really limiting our future. So I, again, want to strongly urge the passage of both of these propositions, and want to thank the City Council for your imagination, quite frankly, on trying to help solve that issue of affordable housing. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Anyone else? All right. Well, that does bring us down to Agenda Item 9, which is informational items two from Chairman, Supervisors, and County Manager, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. That's a lot. So I'll just, if anyone who wants to jump in here, we'll do it that way rather than doing the round robin like I normally do. But we have our council meeting tomorrow to give updates to, so. All right. Well, with that, I would like to thank our county supervisors for coming today and helping to set up this meeting. A lot of great information, and these collaborations are extremely important, and we continue to see how working together, we've been able to accomplish, accomplish a lot. And I'm looking forward to continuing to build on that path.
You know, obviously, the county wants to thank the city for your hospitality, and we really appreciate these joint meetings. I think it's important for us to be able to have this time with each other. I also think it's important for the community to see that we're working together, and what we can actually accomplish when we do engage in partnerships. And I know the mayor and the vice mayor and the vice chair and myself started during the musei, or during the fires and then with the floods, a huddle, we call it the city-county huddle, in which we've had these very informal meetings to talk about ongoing matters affecting both the city and the county. And I think it's been extremely beneficial. And then as part of that, you know, getting these joint meetings together. So I want to thank the staff and thank the City Council for their hospitality today. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, with that...
Oh, Mayor?
Yes?
Beat you to it really quick. Yeah, do I, do I...
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry, I closed my computer, so I must not have seen the hand up.
Oh, all good. Really quick, I just wanted to say thank you as well to our partners of the county, especially County Manager Peru and City Manager Clifton, and all the leadership in both government and agencies. One thing for to and from that I wanted to mention, the CJCC, the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, is a, has a position that is joint-funded by the city and county, and Michael has been hired to fill the role of our coordinator. And so I know Michael was in the back earlier tonight. I'm not sure if he's still there, but just wanted to welcome Michael to our team and thank the city and the county for the partnership on that funding for the CJCC coordinator and the great work that the CJCC does. Chair Horstman and I both are serving there, and I'm hoping that someone else from the City Council will be taking my seat when I leave. But that group does great work, and maybe at our next joint meeting, we can have an update from the CJCC, as they're doing such great, great things. But have a good night, everybody. Good long meeting, and thank you so much. And welcome, Michael.
Thank you, Councilmember Schmoni. Michael, please introduce yourself.
Hi, everyone. I'm Michael Jackwitz. Today's my first day. I'm very excited to be part of the county team as a new director for the CJCC. So thank you, Councilmember Schmoni, and everyone else. Looking forward to doing this important work and working with the county.
Pleasure to meet you. Yes, Councilmember Salas.
Well, this is the last time I'm able to address the joint meeting with council and Board of Supervisor. Because I have to make this gesture. My big grateful, thankful hearts to the leadership of the Board of Supervisors, the leadership of city staff and county staff. But we have come a long way in terms of creating synergy and collaboration and partnership, whether it's, it's addressing fire suppression, flood mitigation, talk about the military installation, sustainability grant. But we also collaborated on a lot of fronts, job training, housing, transportation, metro plan. I do want to... Dark skies, of course, yeah. Environmental stewardship. So just lifting everyone up with gratitude and my profound appreciation of everyone's work here, especially for our staff, both in county, both county and city, who, who, the, our boots on the ground, of working day in and out, providing much needed services, and keeping our, our community safe and sound. I do want to mention that there may be some future areas for more collaboration in terms of short-term rental policy for our region and economic development, and of course, housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Salas. Well, with that, I'm not seeing anything for public participation, so. All right.
I wasn't going to do this because I know we're all really tired and we want to go and have dinner. But yes, you're 100% correct. And just so that members of the community know, and also the members of City Council and the County Board of Supervisors, is part of the huddle is talking about short-term rental. And the county is also working on short-term rental ordinance in conjunction with the city. You know, we don't, literally across the streets, the county, or across the streets, the city. So it's so important that we work together and collaborate on getting something that's going to work both in the city and in the county. So we are doing that. That is part of our collaboration and communication, and also, quite frankly, snowplay. Winter is coming. In fact, the top of the peaks are, are, you can see they're snow capped. So, and I know that's one of the conversations that we've been having as part of our huddle, is how can we make our snowplay here in Northern Arizona safe and healthy for our community and our visitors? So these are things that we do need to continue to coordinate on. So thank you. I wasn't going to say that, but I did. Thank you.
I should have brought down my three-foot mallet. But anyways, thank you all for the meeting, and I hope you have a lovely evening. Getting adjourned.